Good afternoon and welcome to the special town council meeting of the Orno Town Council from Monday, July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Role call shows we have councillor Kenny in attendance, councillor Baker, councillor Powers, councillor DeMarrett, councillor Marks, councillor Larway in person, and we have councillor Berthistle joining us online. Okay, Sonia, can you hear us okay? Everything's good? Good. Excellent. I don't any, any items for agenda review? Be where we add, look to add something to the agenda that may have been missed? Nope. Good. Next up on the agenda is public comments. Is there any public comment in? People that may will have a chance to participate in comments during agenda items if they have a concern they want to talk about. Is there anything public comment not on our agenda? Okay, anything online Mitch?
Nope.
Good. Item four is our first committee discussion, and we have finance and operations, and we're going to discuss Juneteenth ordinance changes. For those who recall, we had a. Orno has a Juneteenth proclamation, and it was brought to our attention by a member of staff that while we had talked about doing Juneteenth as a holiday, we had mis-scheduling that follow-up as part of our meeting, so we had a, what we made this past Juneteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, a town holiday by order, and we committed to use this meeting, this discussion to start talking about changing our, if the Orno should change its, its ordinance and make Juneteenth a part of the regular holiday, like Labor Day, Memorial Day, that are outlined in our ordinances. So we've had a bunch of material in our, a bunch of material in our packet, and we just wanted to have a conversation to see if council had an interest in moving in that direction. Councillor Kenny?
I'd like to, we were advised by council, office council, that that shouldn't, that if we're going to do that, that it shouldn't apply to union-based, union workers, because that's part of a negotiated item. It's an employee benefit, day off. So we're advised, we did it anyway. And I'd like to understand. Now, is there, what, what have we connected with council? What does council say about this? I don't know if where we've done it now, if it's automatically done or?
I'll defer to councillors before you, if that's okay, before you ask anything.
Yeah, and I think in that vein, I do have a question concerning like all the federal holidays. Do we negotiate those with the unions or are they just a given?
So, yeah, I've done a quick glance, and so two of your contracts and specific dates negotiated into them. So with what was done, it was to share it to all employees. There was agreements done so that all employees received the most recent date, Juneteenth of two thousand and twenty-four. Going forward, if you were to enact an ordinance, some contracts could or would say all towns sponsored holidays. So if you add a holiday, then it automatically becomes theirs. But fire and police do not have that automatic clause, and that would be something to address. At the next time, it would be up for negotiation or could be done via side agreement. In side agreements, you can always ask for something in return, but in this situation, I think you're creating more of the model where the town would be conferring that benefit, and the next time the whole contract was up for negotiation, it could be a point brought to share that we obviously shared that as an additional concession without anything in return. And sometimes it's just about the adding up of everything you're doing as a whole. So the short answer to your question, you could do it. Two of your contracts would require a side agreement in order for those employees to get the benefit. And we have one that's, one agreement that's not yet in place, so to say what would happen, I can't tell you. We've got to get that one finished and signed, but in all likelihood, that would be the same model as well as that they would get that holiday too, if you set it into ordinance.
I, I'd be inclined to, you know, get a sense of the council whether we think Juneteenth should be a regular holiday and then charge staff to coordinate, consult with the unions, still what, what kind, you know, we want to offer you this holiday. And do you have any concerns with a side, you know, side agreement or anything else that we have to do? And then, you know, at the point where we have a public hearing or the point before we have a vote, there'd be plenty of time for you to get back to us and report and say, you know, the, you know, the team at the fire department absolutely do not want to take time and a half to work on, you know, the nineteenth of June. And then we'd have to consider that, you know, if that was a bridge we couldn't get past, a barrier we couldn't go over, you know?
Yeah, let's not be silly.
Okay.
I mean, that, I mean, that's the point where I think this is a negotiation. Maybe it's, maybe Patriot's Day isn't relevant anymore. Maybe, I mean, I, I think that we don't do negotiations like this, and this isn't negotiated. And that's why I feel that's why, and this is nothing against the holiday, but, but there are twelve or thirteen already, and if we're going to add one, then may, I, I don't know, because Patriot's Day really isn't a national holiday.
Right.
I think that's mostly only done up here. So, so again, it just goes back to, I mean, that, that's obviously a pretty silly suggestion that, hey, you guys okay with another day off? That's a really, it's not really a negotiation at that point, right?
Right.
So I think this doesn't belong in this venue, and I think it belongs in a contract in a, in a union negotiation. So if this is, if it's decided that this is the higher priority one, then, then look at, look at the whole totality of what's there.
Yeah.
And it might make sense that, again, I randomly picked Patriot's Day. Maybe there's other days. I don't know.
Yeah.
But, so I think this is. That's how it should be done, in my opinion.
I didn't mean, I apologize if I felt like I was undermining you, a little side joke there, but for me, it feels like the council makes a decision about what the policy should be. We have staff to work it out and negotiate it with the unions as, as necessary or as appropriate. We have one, one bargaining unit that's still coming together and two agreements that we just executed in the last six months. So to the extent that, and we would want to learn from that, but so I think it's up to us to decide if, as a council and as a community, if we want Juneteenth to be a holiday. I clearly do, and others can disagree, you know, we'll hear from everybody, but, and then I think staff can overcome or have, be charged with working through the negotiation piece of it.
Obviously, I'm in support of making this a holiday. I think there's so many other municipalities in Maine who have already done the same, and I, I think we're behind in that regard. I think it's a important thing to commemorate, and it puts our money where our mouths are. Literally, we're putting ourselves in line with a proclamation with our actions. I see no reason why we shouldn't.
And we're ultimately just deciding whether we're going to have a, a formal conversation as an, or in a review of an ordinance, so.
Outside of a negotiated, outside of it being a negotiated.
Or perhaps acknowledging that a negotiation may have to take place, but.
Maybe there's, that's.
Hey Leo, Leo, at least we're gonna go around and see, see how the majority of council feels about it, and if we want to move ahead with, with discussing this or not. And I can go next. I think your, your point is, is well taken, and I have some sensibilities around fiscal conservatism from time to time, but on this one, I think, sort of as Rob said, commemorating a really important piece of history feels worthy of a holiday that's been established at the national level, and I'm in support of moving ahead with the conversation and tasking staff with negotiations on this. I don't think that it undermines bargaining position with the unions. I think that, you know, to, to make a fight of it and be like, no, you can't have a holiday sets up more of an adversarial feel to me than I think is necessary. So I'm looking forward to moving ahead with this. And I'll pass it to someone who hasn't spoken yet.
I'm in favor for a number of reasons. I grew up in, in Texas, and there was a community in Texas that was shafted for quite, quite a number of years, and and, and I think it's important to, to acknowledge that this is a celebration for them, and and we get to celebrate it with them, and I think that's a great opportunity if we want, if it's like a swap for another, for another holiday, I'm, I'm open to that, Leo, but I'd like to see this one acknowledged and, and celebrated.
Kick up the other?
I'm fine with it. I assumed the town had it anyway, so.
Okay. So, Sarah, council marks?
Um, yes, I would also say that I'm definitely in favor of this, of giving this holiday. I think it's an actually extremely important holiday, acknowledging sort of long past due, you know, making rights and things that really were not done well in our country's history, and really acknowledging for both the black community and the rest of us how important it is that emancipation happened, and that this moved forward, not as it maybe should have, but that it did eventually. So I'm definitely in favor of this. Leo, I've looked at the list, and I looked at the state list. Did you look at the state list? It looks like we'd be matching what the state holidays are if we added this one. I'm not opposed if you want to propose that you think Patriot's Day is no longer necessary. That, that's fine. I'd be happy to consider that at the same time. If we just want to make a swap, but for me, this holiday is very important, and I just don't feel like we can have a proclamation and say we care about this if we don't actually give this day off. Thank you.
So to leave space open in our conversation for that, does it make sense to, I would assume we could draft, we have to open up the ordinance and have a public hearing on a, on an order, an ordinance change. And I, I assume as part of that, we could strike one holiday, and we could add one, we could strike one. We, but we have to start to agree that we're going to have the conversation and, and kick off the, the process, right? So, does that make sense to people?
So can I, just to make sure, because this is new, and I want to make sure I get the direction clearly as possible. I think if we leave here, there's no agenda item. We've got to get an agenda item back to the council for a public hearing. That should come with language that would do the, would, would include Juneteenth as an, as an additional holiday. In that process, Patriot's Day, I think we should discuss with staff, which would include the, the two current unions and the third to be determined, to get an input. That input could be shared as part of the ordinance that is brought forward and recommended to enact with those things, and that would also open up the opportunity to see if Patriot's Day could be part of this and brought into it as a part of the ordinance change and how that would look if it were to be brought forward. It may, yeah.
Yeah, I would, I'd like to, I mean, I would like to leave room in the conversation for those who think maybe we need, we need to pull a holiday off our list. But I, I don't want to be overly suggestive that there's a consensus among council to eliminate Patriot's Day either. I like the idea of aligning closely with the states. Personally, I like the idea of aligning the state holidays, the university holidays, to the extent that we can, so, or should.
Well, without a doubt, just in the first part, we would need to speak to them as well for the more, for the permanency of the ordinance change to make sure there aren't any unintended consequences that they would like to bring to our attention.
Oh, yeah.
From an efficiency standpoint, what would prevent us from just saying, we recognize all state holidays? State recognizes it, we do. So we don't have to do this. I, I have no idea what holiday, yeah.
I'm good at speaking. Off the top of my head, there's nothing that prevents it from you setting that as your decision. It would mean that anytime the state sets a holiday, you would be automatically adopting it.
Home rule, that's what, that's what stops.
Yes, that's better said. If you wanted to maintain some level of home rule that you can choose which holidays you do.
And we would still need to, if that, we're making that an ordinance change, we still need to go through our normal process of having public hearings and stuff.
Yeah, no, I get that, but instead of doing an ordinance for Juneteenth, having an ordinance, but it actually, I'm guessing you wouldn't be in favor of that, Leo, would be my assumption.
Jake, so.
It doesn't matter.
As you will.
I don't think I would be in favor of that either.
Okay, all right, well then, keep it Juneteenth then.
And I do like the idea of voting on Juneteenth for a, you know, for, from a responsiveness and, you know, leadership perspective. So what I'm hearing, and please, if someone is concerned with this, I guess I would ask that, at our next special later in the, in the meeting, we don't, this is not, we're not passing an order now, so later in the meeting, we have an order regarding.
Rather than setting the time, just not knowing how quickly the response would it, is there an urgency? Meaning that we got to get it, I mean, can we?
Just that we dropped the ball last time. We said we'll schedule a later meeting.
Okay, so, okay, I get where you're coming from. Okay.
I, I would like to, I would like to see.
Have eleven months.
Yeah. A, a later meeting ended up being no meeting, and then, you know, last time. So I would like to see us and get.
Next meeting.
Next meeting have an order to call a public hearing. And that, I, looks like, if we look ahead to our agenda tonight to accept that if we go ahead and adopt order twenty-four, one fifty-four at the end, towards the end, in new business, that would make July twenty-ninth a special council meeting, if, if there's agreement to do that, but we'll get to that later on in the agenda. Does anybody, I don't feel like I'm missing the mark, but if I miss the mark there, that was a good time. Yep.
You already got a sense of council about moving forward on the Juneteenth. Do we need Clint a sense about how people are feeling about swapping holidays versus just adding one? Or are you fine to just talk to staff at this point?
Okay, I'm going to have to talk to a couple of union representatives just to make sure we do it correctly, but I think I can get a response in that amount of time.
Yeah, we need to know. Yeah.
Right.
They don't, if there's a concern at the union level, then you need to voice it quickly, and we'll contact you quickly.
For me personally, I'm open to that if it's important to Leo to bring forward, but I'm also personally feel just great about adding an extra holiday. I think we have really hardworking staff who've done a phenomenal job for years and years, and I feel comfortable with an extra holiday being added.
The next item under finance and operations is I'm to consider a fire department capital equipment repairs. We received material in our packet, kind of walking us through in a bulleted format, where we are, what's been requested. Brian, you want to come? Talk with us? Thank you for being a part of, thank you for the material. Thank you for being a part of the conversation.
Brian coming up, I asked him for this memo. This is when this came to the, everything's new. And you, I can't wait for the day where I don't have to say everything's new, and it will happen. But the, with doing this, I wanted him to go through it quite thoroughly with me. This led to the, to the memo, to the bulleted list. I'm getting an agenda out three days after I started. It was fun. This was kind of a new item, but it's been around the community and the town for a while. So that's what led to that bulleted list. He updated me thoroughly for what was a very challenge, lengthy and challenging repair.
Yeah.
So I mean, if there's questions, there's, there's a lot there, but I mean, I think between the two of us, he can definitely answer a lot of it, and I can hopefully preside some context to some of the other people that aren't no longer here like Cornell and.
Yeah, well, I would, I would, too, it's been, I think it's been an issue the whole time I've been on the council, and I don't think I've ever gotten, and I know I'm senior to at least a couple of you now at this point, right? So it's been, I know, I have noticed an issue, but I didn't know all the details. It's been very helpful, so thank you.
I'm Brian, acting deputy chief, and if you have questions. This started back in two thousand and twenty-two, and it's been a long process. It stemmed from an accident that we had with the aerial one night. And then while I was down there being down for work, we had some scheduled stuff that we were going to have done, and one of those was our main lift cylinder. And that turned into a nightmare. And so we waited a year, year and a half, and finally got it taken care of, and that's, I put some of that stuff in the timeline on that bullet form. So I.
And by that, it was COVID. They couldn't get parts the way they wanted to for that. Pump, so they had to do some manufacturing, and that led to delays in receiving it.
Yep, and the piston that was in question, there's one company in the country that exclusively makes those pistons for E-one fire. So we were also at the whim of that company. And we included them in a lot of our conversations, trying to force, force their hand, I guess you'd say, but in the end of the day, they're a private business, and they have you know, business to attend to, so.
Nice, thank you. I, I skimmed over the document, but my guess, one question is, do we, this ladder is still not, we still not functioning, correct?
Yes, it is, and no, it's not. It, it is operational. We're slowly putting it in service. The problem with two years that is now been over, over half the department has either not seen it or it was here for a month before it left. So we got people that can't operate it, can't drive it. The only people right now that we have on staff are the officers. So we are in a process of working with E-one to bring up, they're bringing up a rep in August, beginning of August, to do a training on it, and then we start doing our in-service training on it, and because we can't put it in service till we have certified operators.
That makes sense. I will say anecdotally, this morning, I, I was walking up Mill Street, just coming into Pat's parking lot behind where Parks Hardware was. Sirens went off, trucks went that way. And by the time I got across the parking lot, the Beezy ladder was coming through, which was, I thought was pretty impressive. They were right there.
Yeah.
I'm not a fast walker, I'm a slow walker.
When our ladder went down, we talked with Beezy. They are automatic mutually aid with us anyways, and they are, they have full-time employees there during the day, one of them, and we asked for them to, we do this with our neighboring communities. We asked them, say, hey, can we add you to our alarm signs? Can you respond with your ladder while ours is down? And they, they jumped at the chance, and they were good with it, and they enjoyed. Because we're going to call them if a major fire or anything anyways, they're going to be here. On our everyday calls, it's good for them to run their truck and respond to help us in our time.
I thought it was very impressive. It says literally just walked across the parking lot, and then they came through, so that's cool.
So I, I shared with, I got an email from a, I can see, this was in the materials that went in, in our board packet on, you know, Thursday. I got an email from a member of the community who had a lot of experience in heavy equipment product support and management. I shared those with the town manager. Brian, I don't want to surprise you with this. I, I know this is, this is a work that we've incurred. It's a bill that we owe, and you've done an amazing job. You're taking it from a hundred and one thousand dollars now to seventy.
Seventy-one.
Seventy-one. So we're, we owe this company for its work. And I had, you know, from this, this very detailed email I got from a member of the community, and I'll leave it to them to say who they were if they choose to, if they're watching or not, but I would say that, you know, Clint and I had a conversation about it, and we had a few things. We wanted to maybe give Clint a chance to talk to this community member, and just to potentially table it, with that in mind, maybe table this until our next meeting with the understanding that we're not, there's nothing that changes our obligation to this company or in any way impacts operations if we take the next, just a little bit of time for, for Clint to have that conversation with the constituent that had it, the Orno resident that had a, had some questions.
This, this has been arguing, or not arguing, discussing this payment since April, so I think we can do another.
Okay.
So it would be two weeks, two weeks. We'll bring it back at the next, if, if you set the twenty-ninth as a meeting, I'd like.
Yeah.
I do not want to extend it beyond that. I think that's bad. Customer relations, we have a duty to our customers, but if there are some, some relevant, I'd love to hear from a community member.
Yep.
Yeah, not being privy to any of that, but so we're ninety days out on this invoice. Is that what you said? We've been talking about it since?
April. When did you reach the seventy thousand dollar amount? When did you reach the seventy-seven thousand dollar amount?
Yep. That's a seventy-one, eight forty, ninety-three.
Yeah.
No, that was on the April nineteenth.
But that was.
That was after the reduction, discussing it from hundred and one to seventy-one. They revised it.
Still waiting ninety days to get paid.
So why are we, I guess I'm, I'm a little bit confused if there's questions that don't have to do with, I mean, this is the bill we owe. How would those questions getting answered have anything to do with whether we occupy this payment?
This is going to come from capital reserve.
Capital reserve.
Why we're here is because it's a capital reserve. That's why the, you, I need your permission to pay.
That I understand.
Yeah, why are we delaying this?
I can answer that. The back in April, well, what we got was what E-one sent us with a pre-invoice. So discussions with finance and stuff are like, I, I dropped a ball, maybe a little bit on a following up as quickly, but was waiting for an actual invoice. Because I know we've had some issues with finance with a pre-invoice, it's not an official invoice. So waiting on that, and they overlooked it, we overlooked it. And then I got a, they had a new person take over their finance billing and found that it was overdue.
Okay.
So I talked, I called down there, got everything straightened out except for this one. I said I, for this one here is.
The other one, the new one.
Oh, no, we have to take it to council to get payment. It would be, I would take it to Monday night's council meeting to get the payment for it.
So you communicate, you've communicated with them within the last little bit, like within a week or?
Yeah. Last week.
Yeah, but they maintained their original invoice date, so it looks like it's all happened at the same day.
Yeah.
They got one, it went from a pre-invoice to an invoice. The invoice was not received until last week.
But again, to Sarah's point, I, I mean, if this is a bill that we owe and we're going to pay it, it doesn't, and I don't know again what what was in that email, but this doesn't seem very efficient to delay paying something that we're already going to pay. So I guess why are we delaying?
We're asking Dan.
Yeah, we're asking Dan.
To be clear, this is not a question for you. We're asking Dan.
Yeah, none of us have seen this email.
Right, no, it came in late last night, so.
But if we're going to pay the bill, why don't we just pay it now, and then we don't have to do this?
Work, when was the work completed?
We got the truck back to our station on May seventeen. And we have been trading on it, and we had some issues that arose when they, after they deliver it. So we had to get those things repaired, and then once, now that those are repaired, we've got, you'll, you'll probably be seeing it out on the road more. They've been taking it out, laddering buildings with it, and doing some training with it.
So I guess just, just summarize, the work was done in May. They, maybe the invoicing was messed up. Part of me feels like, as hard as it is to get this work done, and seems like there's very few vendors out there, I'd like to stay on the good side of any vendor we have that's in the state, but again, not knowing what I don't know. Yeah. If, if there, if you think there's a real, like, and we've gone from a pre-invoice of a hundred down to seventy-three on the actual invoice, seems like we've, unless there's more juice to squeeze off that, which I, and maybe there is, I don't know.
No, my, my discussions with E-one with regards to that is like, hey, this, you have one single vendor that makes your pistons. We're at their whim. I'm having my truck down for a year and a half. I said, we gotta, this is not acceptable to the town and the department, and they understood it, they worked, and they, that's when they knocked, so they could, redid it, refigured it to take thirty thousand off.
We could, you know, I think you did a great job with the negotiation, and if the council's will is to act on this, you know, Clint, maybe it's a follow-up to this constituent act, and I could share the email with everybody. It's not, you know, it's not, I didn't put it in the agenda materials, but I can share it with the rest of the council, and, you know, if the will of the council is act on it now, get it off our agenda, may, it's a follow, it could be a follow-up email to this constituent.
Yeah.
First conversation.
Yeah. I'd like to just. Time in, yeah, that's, that would be my perspective, is that we, we can pay our bill now in the timeliest fashion, and also I think it would be worth following up with a constituent who had insight about this, and if there's something that we all can learn about how to approach similar situations the next time, that's great, too.
Okay, so we'll have to take a motion then to move along. If, if we're done with the discussion, which I suppose we could have taken a motion. Committee struck. Motion.
Second.
To pay the bill.
Yeah. All right, the motion is in favor of, for those following along with the agenda at home, the order is a motion for order twenty-four, one forty, order authorizing the town manager pay. Order twenty-four, one fifty, sorry. Order authorizing the town manager pay Greenwood Emergency Vehicles LLC of Brunswick, Maine, up to seventy-one thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars, ninety-three cents for emergency hydraulic system repairs to the fire cap, fire tower truck. It funds drawn from the capital equipment reserve account. So I have a motion and a second. Is there, okay, they got a motion from councillor Baker, a second from councillor Marks. Yep. And any, I have one more question before we go about, what's the status of that, that reserve account? Do we have that?
Four hundred thousand, four hundred thousand, seven hundred forty dollars.
And is that for all capital?
That's all capital equipment.
All right. All right, and are we ready for a vote? All right, we'll have to do it. Rule call, because we have a council member who's virtual. So councillor Berthistle?
In favor.
Councillor Kenny?
Favor.
Councillor Baker?
In favor.
Councillor Powers?
In favor.
Councillor Marks?
In favor.
Councillor Larway?
Favor.
Councillor DeMarrett is in favor. So thank you for the conversation. So thank you for the conversation and uh we'll move ahead and thank you for uh your work. But we can follow up about the follow-up then.
Yep.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Excuse me, next item up, um, is community development and Mitch, do you wanna, Mitch Stone, our I, I always get concerned about introducing your title Mitch by, you don't wanna conflate it or sneak something out, so would you introduce yourself?
Sure.
Thank you.
Uh, Mitch Stone, Director of Community Economic Development, um, I want to apologize because I'm trying to run the meeting and do this at the same time, but the good news is I don't have to present this. Um, we have um online Nikki Conan, uh, and Brad Lyon from Sabego Technics and Claire Winter and Jared Ferngallett from uh DOT. And then also they, their attendees, but we have BACS, um, Sarah Devlin and Jacob Stein from BACS who are also part of that, they're attendees, so they may want to say something. I have um given Nikki, who I think if she unmutes and talks, you'll see her on the screen. The other thing I want to apologize for is because of all the things that we had to do, we don't have the big screen in here because we have it, we have to have it for uh executive session, so you all, there are copies up here of both the presentation and um, the the materials, so, um, without further ado, Nikki, I don't know if, if you're all set to go or if I.
Could we, yeah, could we just tee up for us and like, what are our expectations out of today's meeting and perhaps for the public?
Absolutely, so um, the goal here is tonight, we want to um kind of roll out the concept plans, these are concepts. These are ideas that we can do based on the data that was collected. Um, Sabego has done a great job of trying to put this together, so we can get something on paper and have a discussion about um what this looks like. Um, the idea tonight is really to roll it out for, for the council to see and the public. Um, after tonight, all the materials from this meeting plus this presentation will go on uh the website for the Route Two Corridor Project. And the hope is that people will be able to go on and do some research and understand it prior to the twenty-fourth, which is a public meeting at five to seven. Um, and anytime in between, we can collect information, um, the Route Two, uh, Route Two uh project dot, at, at orno dot org is the web, uh, the email address. You can always go on there, people can contact me as well, the town if they have comments. The goal here was not necessarily to have a huge public conversation about it, uh, but certainly however you feel comfortable taking, uh, taking feedback.
Please add that in public here.
Excuse me?
We have a public here on the twenty-fourth.
Yep.
Does that mean the project starts?
No, oh, sorry.
I think that's it, that's a good one.
So we're, 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 we're a long, long road in that process, so this is the part of the planning part of this, um, this initiative with the state. Um, after that, there is a um engineering component, I'm hoping maybe uh DOT can shed a little bit more light on today. And then um, once those things are done, a package is put together, there will be a final concept that would come back um, prior to probably the engineering happening that um you guys would see and we would kind of look at and say, this is something we're comfortable moving forward um with. Um, once that is done and the, the um the engineering piece is done, then that package would go to the state for application for grant um, for the Village Partnership Initiative, that's a federal grant, um, they would put that in. And then, once that happened, then the ball would be rolling. Probably a pretty lengthy timeline, I mean, it's not a, like, okay, we, we make this decision and the, the November is the, and if I'm wrong, Jared or Claire, please chime in. November is kind of a window to apply for funds, so each year if we miss the November window, then you're, you're looking at another year prior.
Yep, and are there any, are there any major budget um issues for us between now and when we apply?
So that, that I would, I'm hoping that DOT could shed some light on the, the preliminary engineering piece. Uh, because there's been some conversation about what that looks like and how much that would be.
Yeah.
Um, and, and I think that would be the biggest budget piece. Um, the, the planning part is already allocated and we're, we'll do that. The next piece in this would be that uh preliminary engineering piece.
Okay, great.
Can I ask just a, a step maybe back at a very high level, can you explain what drove this entire, why we're having this conversation? Sure. Where did this, how did this start? I, I mean, I've been on the board for two years. I don't know how it started, I think at some point I saw something about approving some funds, but I don't recall any real discussion as to in what we're trying to accomplish here, and so.
That's fine.
That's clear.
Um, I, so I will go back and give the best I can, I kind of came into this once, um, once the partnership and the Village Partnership Initiative kind of got brought up, and working with Rob, and then when Rob left, I took this on. So my understanding and what I know is there were several, um, several I guess studies done on the Main Street Corridor, really in the Main Street area, and we do have some people here that were on some of these committees. So, um, that were done in the past to look at pedestrian safety, to look at uh bike and pedestrian safeties, particularly in the Main Street corridor, the really Main Street. Um, my understanding is there was a committee, they met, they worked with Sabego, they came up with some ideas in a shortened version of this, um, and then it came down to funding, how are we going to fund it? Um, so there was some conversation about that, we didn't have the funding, we were trying to figure out a way to do that. In the conversations with this whole thing, then the idea of a village partners, a partner initiative came up with DOT. When that happened, the project could grow because it was a lot of funding into a larger piece. Um, in, in looking a little bit more dealing with Park Street and that piece and Park Street beyond where uh, the, the big three apartment complexes are with traffic and, and pedestrian safety there, and also all the way out to Kelly Road. Um, so it kind of expanded from there, um, from a, from a, you know, really a, a narrow scope, and I don't know if you want to add anything, leave that to that, but went to a committee that worked through a process with Sabego on a smaller scope of this, and then funding is what caused it to stall, in all honesty, there was no funding there, um, and then it got picked back up and added to the whole scope.
That's pretty much it, Leo, and, and as a battle scarred veteran, I would be happy to sit down and go through the blow-by-blow with you sometime if your interest is, but we, under um Rob Yerxes um, chairmanship, um, a committee of people from the town and um people representing pedestrians, bicyclists and bus riders. In the modest persons of Eric De Silva, Deanna Hamilton and me. Um, we met, I think, beginning in two thousand and eighteen, like through two thousand and twenty because we did the last bit of it on Zoom, when you work the Sabego Techniques. But our project went from Kelly Road to the bridge. But, but a lot of the, um, we did a lot of the foundational work um, that resulted in this plan, and our goals were exactly the same. Our goals were traffic calming. Improve traffic circulation and those two things are related because we have a lot of traffic that's, you know, moving in and off of Main Street. So we wanted people who were dropping their kids off at school to be able to do that safely. Um, we also wanted to make things better for pedestrians, for bicyclists and for people using the bus. And so all those goals in our minds were related and we thought, you know, that Route Two Corridor from Kelly Road to the university is Orino's front door. It's the introduction many people have to Orino. If they're bringing their kids to school, if they're coming to the university, if they're commuting, if they see a horrible, clogged, frustrating mess. It's not good for economic development, it's not good for the people who live here. So we took all those things into account and this new committee took those same assumptions and extended them all the way up on the other side of the bridge. So, from, from beginning on Webster Side up to where the reserve is.
So the, this is maybe, I don't know, this is, but the new committee then was by council or by Rob? Where did the new committee, and who was on the new committee?
So it wasn't necessarily a new committee, basically staff took the information that came from that, um, worked with, um when we found out that there was an opportunity with the Village Partnership Initiative through DOT. Staff worked through that process to create the planning PPI, which they call it Planning Partnership Initiative. Um, and with Sabego, take the information from pre- previous things, open it up and look at what are the issues on the corridor safety, we did an original, kind of reach out to a few stakeholders um, and also looked at, um, you know, traffic and stuff like that. Then we had the public meeting in February-ish.
February, yeah.
That really was, okay, sky's the limit, what, what, what do you see on here, what are the challenges, give us all the information. Sabego then take, took that information, okay, and then they created, based on the data that they had um, on the corridor and also the feedback, tried to put together some concepts that would address multimodal transportation, trying to move people through the corridor safely, walkers, bikers, um the bus piece, um, and also, and also car traffic, um, so that's kind of how we got to this point.
Okay, I, I appreciate that and I hope, I mean, I'm, I'm the three of us, Sonya, I guess Rob and myself have been on the longest and, and I feel a little bit out in left field, to be very candid, people ask me, I was like, I have no idea, no idea why, what, how, anything. So I appreciate you bringing me up to speed on, on all of that and uh completely understand it and some really cool looking renderings on here for sure and.
Yeah.
I, I just wanted to.
And just so you know, I think.
Set on that whole thing.
Probably started with Rob looking at sidewalks and saying, gee, these need to be fixed. Okay, and then as you peel back the end, you're like, gee, we peeled that back and this needs to be fixed. And then it became this bigger thing, and so I think that's when, when the committee started and then looking different. There's a lot of things like that.
All right, all right.
Thank you, appreciate that.
That's good, so definitely sets the table, so thank you.
Second, because it looks like, Claire, you can go ahead and speak.
Yep. Just let it.
Yeah. Hi, I was just gonna just add a little bit of context to, um, and just say that, yeah, the whole kind of philosophy behind this program, I think this program is technically the Planning Partnership Initiative. Um, but it's really partnering with towns throughout Maine on projects like this that are really focused on safety issues, looking at pedestrian safety, how do we, like, improve the feel of this, the, like, this main focal point uptown, um, and make it a safer place for the community. And there clearly was a lot of history and work done previously that was already looking at this. But this program in particular is really about going through this initial planning phase, which we're doing right now um, and setting ourselves up to go through a three-stage process. This is the first phase, the second phase is the preliminary engineering, which is a partnership between the state, us, and Orino again, and then the third phase would be construction. Um, and that's where, at this kind of point in history right now, there's just so many amazing opportunities for a lot of funding through the federal government, um, including things like the RACE grant, which some of you may have heard of. And so that's why we're really excited about this program and we're excited about working with you um, so that we can really set this whole project up, so that we have a really strong application for that construction phase, which will be the biggest, you know, the biggest lift in terms of funding, but it would be eighty percent federal funding for the construction phase. Um, so all the work that we're doing right now is really important and really critical to get us to that point where we can actually implement what Nikki's gonna be giving an overview of today.
All right, good, thanks, Claire.
Nikki, I think you're good, good to go ahead as long as you can share, and I did that right.
Can you see the slide deck?
Can't yet, no.
No, okay. How about now?
Yep, that's the money shot.
Okay, all right, everyone can hear me, okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect, all right, let's. Okay, so, um, Mitch distributed all of this information ahead of time. He's kind of already introduced us, so I won't go through all the details of the agenda, um, this is the same presentation that we are planning to give for um the public feedback session next week. Um, so we'll go through a little bit of project history, some of the existing conditions information. Um, our proposal alternatives and analysis, and then it's my understanding the public input piece will come next week. Um, we'll take in questions from council and things of that nature, but that will primarily be handled at the public hearing next week. All right, to start us off, um, this was kind of already addressed through the conversations previously, but in terms of project history, uh, the corridor that we're looking at, which is approximately three miles, has been studied kind of extensively through the years in different uh, segments. Particularly the Main Street Safety and Pedestrian Study, which Sabego Techniques completed, was from Kelly Road to the bridge. Uh, Main DOT also partnered with the town to create a pedestrian safety and action plan with the Bike Coalition of Maine. That's what you're seeing in the orange circles, those were their primary focus areas. And then TY Lynn also did a study on the Park Street Corridor in two thousand and eighteen, which is highlighted in the blue. And so what this study is aiming to do is basically take a holistic approach and look at all of those studies together. And also with a new lens, it's not as viscerally constrained as we previously were looking at it. Uh, here's the purpose and need statement for the planning study, which we presented at our um initial public hearing back in February. Um, hopefully you all had a chance to look through this, I'm not gonna read it word for word, uh, but if we want to circle back to this at the end, we certainly can. So in terms of our efforts to date, um, Sabego kicked off the project with Main DOT Town Staff and BACS back in early two thousand and twenty-three. Since then, we've um completed some initial data collection, which included some safety audit meetings with Main DOT staff. Uh, meetings were held with the local utilities, the Federal Highway Administration and the University of Maine. We did some additional data collection back when school was in session in fall of two thousand and twenty-three to supplement some of the um, information that we were working through, and then as we discussed, we um met in February of two thousand and twenty-four to do the initial public outreach. So what we've done is we've taken the initial information that we got from the public outreach session as well as all the emails that have come in through the platform that the town has set up and tried to put them into buckets to develop themes where people's priorities were. And so that's where you can see this pie chart to the left, uh, that kind of summarizes what the themes of the comments were. You'll see there's a heavy emphasis on pedestrian improvements and bicycle improvements uh, with traffic calming improvements and aesthetics also receiving about o- over ten percent of um the theme in the comments. And so we've developed basically kind of these bullet points that provide high-level considerations for what we're looking to achieve as a part of the study, whether it be.
Councilor, yeah. Councilor Kenny had a question about the, the data, yeah.
You, um, you have roughly the numbers that, of people, of responses that you were able to receive on this? See the percent, percentages obviously, but I'm curious.
Yeah, so I let me grab that for you, I may not have it right in front of me, I know I have it on a separate document that I can um, circle back with at the public forum and add that in. I believe we ended up with thirty emails and about the same that spoke at the public meeting. Um, but I would, but I would have to circle back with you on that.
Bye. Look over a rough number, thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Nikki.
Um, so yeah, so primarily looking at things like pedestrian infrastructure, um, conditions of sidewalks, crosswalks, um, connectivity and visibility, bicycle infrastructure and having dedicated facilities. Um, and then also an impactful project in terms of beautification of the corridor, retaining historical characteristics and adding green space. And so these are kind of the bullets that we worked forth to develop the concept plans that we've put forward today. So in terms of existing conditions data that we've collected, uh, we did turning movement counts, so what we refer to as T- So in terms of existing conditions data that we've collected, uh, we did turning movement counts, so what we refer to as TMCs. These collect vehicular, pedestrian and truck data at, um, intersections of significance. And so these intersections were identified with the project team. Uh, we collected data at Kelly Road, Island Avenue, Westwood Drive, Goodridge Drive. Pine Street, Mill Street and Bennet Road, College Avenue, Rangeley Road and Washburn Place. And so those are kind of the highlights that you will see throughout the content plans. The, the data was rooted at those locations. We also obtained historical crash data, um, and reviewed alternative modes crash history, so, uh, both bicycle and pedestrian crashes. We modeled the existing flows utilizing the data that we collected in the program Synchron Traffic. Which basically takes the volumes that we collected and simulates, um, both the existing conditions and then ultimately our different alternatives. We completed turn lane warrants to understand if left turn lanes, right turn lanes, things of that nature were necessary. As well as, um, traffic signal analyses, which follow a similar, uh, process utilizing, um. Warrants to understand if, if those need to be implemented. And then we also collected speed data. So in terms of crash data, uh, the intersection of Rangeley Road, the intersection of Washburn Place and Boulder Drive. And the intersection of North Main Avenue are currently high crash locations. Um, high crash location is a term that is utilized by Main DOT that takes into account the number of crashes in a three-year period. As well as the critical rate factor. So that takes into account injury levels, um, and things of that nature. And so Main DOT utilizes that criteria to. Look at locations across the state that might have a higher than expected crash rate. And so those three intersections were identified as a part of the inventory this year. And then also the segment between Rangeley Road and Washburn Place is also considered a stretch that is a high crash location. In looking at the speed data that we processed, um, speeds are generally higher than what is posted out there. With the most significant location being north of Spencer Street, where there's a twenty-five mile per hour posted speed limit. And the eighty-fifth percentile, um, speed that was collected was thirty-five miles per hour, so almost ten miles per hour over. The posted speed limit. And then the two figures that you see below the table are the locations where the pedestrian crashes and bicycle crashes happened over the last. Five-year period. So pedestrian is on your left and bicycle on your right. So the vehicular volumes were reviewed for the twenty twenty-three data that we collected. What we also do is we project these volumes out for a twenty-year study window. Um, we look at historical rates of increase of traffic and then utilize what we're seeing for patterns. To come up with what those volumes might look like in the next twenty years, which is a twenty forty-three study window. We do this so that. Um, we're not looking at solutions that only fix volumes today. We're looking at solutions that have long-term impacts on the corridor. And so one of the things that we often use to categorize, this is what we call Level of Service, LOS. Um, this is taking into account the amount of vehicular delay at certain locations. So how long someone is. Um, waiting in a queue to, uh, make their movement. And so we identified some existing. I guess what we would call deficiencies, um, and those were northbound lefts. Um, at Main Street and Kelly Road in the twenty forty-three conditions, that was considered an LOS E. So when. The movement starts to drop below LOS D, that's kind of what we consider the last like line of, um, acceptable. Categorization. And so when things start to drop to E or F is when we start to look for potential solutions. So Westwood Drive lefts in the AM in both twenty twenty-three and twenty forty-three were operating at LOS F. Uh, twenty forty-three Goodridge, Goodridge Drive, uh, AM and PM was also operating at LOS F. Twenty forty-three Bennet Road lefts and throughs in the PM were at LOS E and twenty forty-three Washburn left. AM and PM were at LOS E and LOS F. And so the, this kind of gives you a general understanding of like where we might be seeing deficiencies. At some of the intersections that we're looking at. And of important note is that the twenty forty-three results assume that no improvements are completed. So none of the concepts that are shown. Are looked at in these initial inventories. This is a. Hey, in twenty years, if traffic increases by X amount, what does that look like if nothing were to be done today?
Nikki?
Yeah.
So just to clarify, the LOS levels are calculated on the twenty-year out projections for twenty forty-three? Or those are the LOS levels right now at those intersections?
So, um, it's slightly differentiated. Some of them are twenty twenty-three and some of them are twenty forty-three. And so we tried to acknowledge that difference where like Westwood Drive, for example, the lefts in the morning out. Are already operating at LOS F based on twenty twenty-three conditions without future growth.
Thank you.
Right, um, also asked, did you, is there, I don't see in here, so I assume it hasn't been done, but do you also model out? What the LOS is based on the various? Options or not?
Yes, so that's a big piece of, and. This presentation could turn from a twenty-minute presentation into a forty-plus minute presentation if we. Kind of detailed that all out for every location. So what I've done is kind of just included the concept plans and wanna talk about it at a high level. And if there's more interest in getting into some of the minute details, we can certainly go there.
And I don't want to get into those details. I, I'm, but I was just curious if there, if it could just be a chart provided like you've done here with. Not now, but I think that would be useful. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, and, and this kind of lays the groundwork for. When we're looking at these proposed solutions, how it compares to our expectations and what types of. What level of improvement is ultimately being made by the proposed implementation? Alright, so anything that we wanna touch on before we dive into the alternatives? Okay, awesome. So I will start with Kelly Road at Main Street, where we looked at two different alternatives. So the first alternative will be, um, for those that were on the advisory committee for this section, will look very similar to what we had originally. Um, it looks to retain the existing configuration with some upgrades, including, uh, restricting the travel lanes. To eleven feet with five-foot bicycle lanes. Um, it flip flops the right turn lane, um, and the bike lane, which is the preferred kind of alternative at a signalized intersection. So. As opposed to having the bike lane in the shoulder space, um, it's between the through lane and the right turn lane. We've looked at implementing a, um, concrete truck apron to try to tighten up the radius at that location. But because Route Two is an arterial and there are heavy vehicles, we also have to accommodate their movements. Uh, new sidewalk infrastructure along Main Street carried out both Kelly Road to Deir Gho Pines and then to Deir Gho Pines on Main Street. And then in this scenario, all of the, um, traffic signal equipment would be upgraded. Um, the timings and the phasings would all be optimized as well. And then there is a new pedestrian connection with a signalized crossing on Main Street as well. The second.
Sorry, when you say restrict to eleven feet, is the, what is it now? And also is the five-foot bike lane, is that a restriction also?
Oh, what do you mean by restriction?
I, I think you said, you, I thought you just said, uh, change the lanes to eleven feet travel lanes. I thought you said restrict. So that's a reduction?
Yeah, so right now out there, um, I, I don't know exactly what the. Existing travel lanes are off the top of my head out there in the shoulder widths. It varies significantly through the corridor. Um, if that's something of interest, I can certainly pull that for the public meeting to kind of get a before and after feel. Um, but yes, the, the intent through this section primarily from Kelly Road to the downtown. Um, there's wide shoulders there today, and so we would be moving the curb lines in, providing somewhat of a road diet. Um, to hopefully calm traffic speeds as well, but still provide what we consider the five feet, which is, um. Considered the minimum for a bicycle lane up against a curb.
So, so the bike lane is also reduced. They're both reductions, correct?
No.
Well, bike lane is.
It's increased. There's five feet.
So there's not, there's not formal bike lanes there today. There's a variable shoulder width that would be formalized into. A bicycle lane.
Like, wouldn't start until like the hill.
Nikki, I do think through the public meeting, it would be important in my mind that there's some figures given to folks in the public. Of what the current width is, both for the car travel lanes and the bicycle lanes. Because I think it's hard for people to compare and think about if they don't have an idea whether things are getting wider or narrower than they currently are. So. I think it'd be a great thing if we could add that in for next week. And perhaps also, just you were saying that. Like total width of roadway right now, including shoulder and bike lanes are something I'm interested in as we move forward in the conversation because. I have some other questions coming up around bike lanes and I'd like to know how much room we have to work with. And, you know, are we maxing it out or are we getting rid of shoulder space that we technically have a right of way to and can work with? Is gonna be important for me to understand. Thanks.
And maybe if we treat this like a dress rehearsal for that public, you know, session, so if we have questions that we need as counselors, we need to get answered and move back to staff. But maybe, I think that kind of suggestion that Sarah and Leo should get a really good ones in terms of how can this be improved for the conversation with the public? Alright, thanks, Nikki.
I noticed that.
Taking some notes.
Yeah, I noticed that like, I know you can't down, say, um. At Hamlin Street down to Main Street, you can't make a protected bike lane, but back here, I don't, the, I don't see any reason why there. Couldn't be a protected bike lane unless there are state rules against that because of the route. Um, this would be one area where the speed limit goes up to thirty-five miles an hour. And if we have the room, having, having a road diet. And a protected bike lane seems like a really, really good idea to me, because you're going from twenty-five to thirty-five miles an hour at this particular section.
And Matt, I guess just I wanna say for folks who might not know, like, I'm assuming a protected bike lane means the sort that has. An actual median between the bike, some strip of grass between the bike lane and the car lane.
A curb.
Or even some division between the bike lane and the car lane would be the protected bike lane and.
Maybe this is impossibility in Maine because of, um, plowing. I don't know, so.
These are questions I had also though, because my understanding is that that would be safer for bicyclists.
It is.
And I'm assuming we keep throwing around the word, the phrase road diet, but for people who don't know, I assume that means narrowing the road to slow people down. Is that correct, Nikki?
That's right.
Yes.
Thanks, just putting some of those terms out there for the public meeting, I think is important.
Love it.
Yeah, so.
In your footsteps.
Oh, I love.
Good, Nikki, we're sorry, we're not just.
That's okay. Um, yeah, road diet scenarios are looking to reduce the total pavement width that's out there. Um, and just. For everyone's reference, we don't have necessarily any protected bike lanes by the definition that was just discussed as a part of these concepts. What we do have is dedicated bike lanes, so areas that are five feet in width that are being stenciled for bicycle use.
Nikki, as this progresses, when I looked at those throughout the plans, I know we're not there yet, but. My understanding is that those would be pretty similar to what we have now, which essentially disappear every time anyone parks on Main Street. Is that correct?
Bike lane and breakdown lane, the same thing, I guess, is kind of.
Yeah, so bike lanes and shoulder spaces would be essentially intertwined in this scenario.
But they're not dedicated, even if you're saying that.
So.
Yeah.
But I think it matters for the public meeting, because these are the same questions we're gonna get.
Gonna ask.
If it's possible that a lane where the parking doesn't block it, again, that's safer for the.
But he's not gonna change this proposal between now and.
Just, just so we're clear though, parking you can control. So if you don't want people parking on Main Street, we can create. No parking areas on Main Street that would control that differently. That's a, that is something that's within your control regardless of this plan. Um, when it comes to that, so.
I also wanna note that these areas are five feet such that people can't park in them. So they're not going to double. As both parking and a bicycle lane.
Thank you.
Not at this area, yeah. Because this is not. Alright, let's go, sorry.
Okay.
Alright Nikki, I don't mean you, I mean.
Uh, alright, so are we good to continue on?
You too, yeah.
Okay, alright, so, um, Kelly Road, we looked at a secondary alternative that involved a single lane roundabout configuration. So where we saw opportunity here is for this to provide both traffic calming, coming in from VZ and I ninety-five and also gateway treatment. You'll see that there's opportunities for green space, um, to, to emphasize both of those conditions. In the roundabout condition, um, the bicycle lanes would be transitioned into the travel lane to circulate around the roundabout. Um, as opposed to having a dedicated lane, uh, which is the preferred design with roundabouts. Because you don't wanna create additional conflict points with the bicycles riding on the exterior of the roundabout. Similarly, there would be new sidewalk infrastructure that mimics, um, Alternative One, um, as well as a new crosswalk. In this scenario, because you're not in a signalized condition, we would have, uh, rectangular rapid flashing beacons. So the signage that has the buttons that's actuated by a pedestrian and they flash as someone's waiting in the crosswalk. So this is what the intersection currently looks like today. And here's what the opportunity would look like for a roundabout configuration. So moving north on the corridor, um, looking at the stretch from Deir Gho Drive to Island Avenue. This primarily mimics again what we had done as a part of the initial study a few years ago. Looking at eleven-foot travel lanes and five-foot bicycle lanes on Main Street. Um, new five-foot concrete sidewalks on the west side of Main Street. And also replacement of the drainage system through this area to the downtown, um, which as a part of our conversations. Um, the existing infrastructure through that stretch is certainly aging and needs to be upgraded as a part of. Any sort of construction part, project of this size. Um, it also sounds like there are plans for a sewer project in our coordination with town staff, which would be outside of the scope of this study. But, um, could be implemented as a part of a larger project. And then also the Johnny Mackbrook Culvert, the large culvert, and I don't know if you can see, can you see my cursor up on your screen?
Yes, yes.
So the, the Johnny Mackbrook Culvert is right in this area. Um, this would also be. Looks to be, um, redone as a part of this project using stream smart techniques for, uh, fish passage. And brought up to, uh, the new standards. Alright, as we advance towards Island Avenue, um, we would again be looking to implement eleven-foot travel lanes, five-foot bicycle lanes on Main Street. One of the things that we talked with town staff about is that Island Ave is currently the access to Ayers Island. Which has been discussed for future redevelopment. And so we did some analysis as to what that intersection might look like. If a redevelopment was to happen. And so we looked at some preliminary programs of like mixed use. Residential and commercial and what that traffic volume might need at the intersection. And one of the things was a potential left turn lane onto Island Avenue. And so since that's not necessarily warranted in. The current condition, um, we've provided a raised, uh, landscaped island instead. That allows for the project to basically be designed around a future left turn lane. We've also looked at access management opportunities at this parcel. Um, and a new crosswalk at Gilbert Street and a new bus shelter at Gilbert Street. And so one of the things that we also talked about. Was a crosswalk at Island Avenue. Um, in looking at sightlines from this location up here. It was preferable to keep the crosswalk further away from the crest of the hill of Main Street. And again, with RFBs to provide additional visibility. Alright, continuing forward from Island Ave to Spencer Street, we'd be looking at eleven-foot travel lanes and five-foot bicycle lanes. Uh, new five-foot concrete sidewalk on both sides of Main Street. And in this section, the current, which it's hard to see on this plan, but the current center line of the road is really over here. And so it's not necessarily centered on the right away, which are these red lines here. And so we'd be looking to readjust that center line location such that we can provide some esplanade space. On the easterly side of Main Street and utility poles would fall in that esplanade space as opposed to where they fall today in the middle of the sidewalk. Um, to accomplish this, we would be. Um, to accomplish this, we would be replacing the existing retaining walls on both sides. And these retaining walls specifically would be shifting in this direction.
Which way?
Um, towards these properties, so westerly.
Alright.
Um, additionally, there would be a new crosswalk at Spencer Street with RFBs as well. And so if you remember, this is where we're at today. The utility pole is basically smack dab in the middle of the sidewalk in these locations. And so this is what it could look like in the future condition, where the center line gets pushed this way as well as these retaining walls to move the utility poles into the esplanade and still allow sidewalk on both sides of the road.
What is a right away definition? I mean, people, I assume. How do you, how do you define that? Can you uh, or could you do it in your presentation in terms of what? What can happen in rule? Yeah.
Yeah, and generally before going through the concept plans, I like to kind of ground people with what all of these lines mean. Um, for the purpose of brevity today, I skipped over that. Um, but the right away lines, these red lines, um, are what's considered the public right of way for Main Street. And so when we're talking about what we have for space to allocate for improvements, that's the area that we're looking at.
Does the state or Orno own that land? Or is the property owner who abuts the right away on that land?
So this area and my cursor is Route Two. So that's state owned and then anything outside of that is property owned.
Outside of the red lines, you're saying inside the red lines is state owned and outside the red lines is property owner owned.
Yes.
It's kind of possessions kind of nine tenths of the law though, I assume for some. So yeah, you know, there'll be, I'm sure you run into it a lot with people. There's gonna be some pushback. Thank you for articulating, but good conversations we had. And the RFB is the um, the blinky crosswalk, right?
Yep.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Um, alright, so continuing towards um, Westwood Drive. Um, similarly eleven foot travel lanes and five foot bicycle lanes right now. And so those that were on the advisory committee before, we were primarily looking to utilize what we had for existing pavement out there and not make significant changes to curb lines or look at items like road diets just because of the financial implications. And so what we've done is looked at this area again through a different lens. Um, and so as opposed to kind of restriping the paved area um, through here like we were before, we've, we've moved the curb lines in to get that eleven foot travel lane and five foot um, shoulder through here. So then we would also be looking at new five foot concrete sidewalks on both sides, but they would be separated by five foot esplanades with street trees and ornamental lighting. And then similarly, the crosswalk at Westwood Drive would be upgraded with RFBs.
Nikki, can I ask a question here?
Sure.
Especially when we get to this area where we're adding um, five feet of esplanade on both sides. Um, I guess I, I begin to have a question about, you know, yes, we could eliminate all parking on Main Street, but a lot of people count on those parking spaces. And I guess I'm just curious, was there an option considered here instead of adding ex- esplanade green space? To simply create a separated bike lane on the side with parking between the bike lane and the driving lane instead? Because that would potentially allow us to keep parking, which is how you see it done in like most larger metropolitan areas where the parking is maintained, the bike lanes on one side and the traffics on the other side of the parking lane. Was that looked at or any other option that would allow us to still have people park and keep the bicycle lane fully functional and not interrupted by parked cars?
So the parking piece was an extensive part of our conversations back in the previous iteration of plan development. And so we ultimately moved forward. We had a very robust um, public process, worked with the advisory committee that ultimately determined that we were removing the on-street parking through this section. So as a part of our previous efforts, that was a, a big part of the conversation. It's just not something that moved forward as this advanced.
Got it. So if the public asks, the answer is there were discussions about that and a decision was made to move forward with a plan that would eliminate all Main Street parking from where to where?
Basically from Westwood Drive to Goodridge. There's a small area near Goodridge that has a few parking spaces still retained, um, but primarily through the rest of the area it was removed.
And was there already no parking outside of that area Mitch? Can you speak to that? Past Westwood to Goodridge, there has been parking, but on either side there hasn't been. Is that correct?
In all honesty, I don't, I don't know off the top of my head. I do notice that you don't see parking the further you get up.
Yeah.
I've not seen if there's signs there. I don't know if it's.
I'm just thinking again for the public, it'd be good to know what this, the current status is. So when people have questions, we can answer that question about there's never been any parking except in this area and we're proposing eliminating it in that area, I think is important for people to.
Just a guess, but I think there is parking out there. I just don't think it's necessary most of the time.
Yeah.
People pull the driveways out there. So there are driveways.
But I think we.
Church, there's not other, there's not out one below, there's nothing to.
Yeah.
Be there and parking on the street.
Contractors do certainly use it when they do.
But I think we just need to be clear for the public about what the current rules are and what the new proposed ones would be and where those differences are. That's all I'm putting. Thanks.
Matt, did you have something?
Nope.
Thanks Nikki.
Thank you.
One of the things I wanted to point out as well as we're talking about, um, you know, wide shoulders and things like that is that Westwood Drive specifically, there is an existing wide shoulder that I know the town in the past has put um, large cones in so that uh, vehicles can't bypass those that are waiting to turn onto Westwood. And so that would be eliminated as a part of this as well. So moving forward.
But it's.
It doesn't look like. This is a side conversation that we got. Oh, Council Baker has a legitimate question.
Uh, it doesn't look like there are any changes on Westwood as far as that intersection. And that's it. As somebody travels that every day, that's a really big congestion point going through the school. On both sides.
Yeah, absolutely. And so I'm gonna talk about that a little bit more when we get to Goodridge. Um, there's a reason why that plan looks a lot more significant at that location as opposed to what we are proposing at Westwood.
Thank you.
So through the remainder of this section, um, the travel lanes are actually gonna get even uh, shorter at ten and a half feet with the five foot bicycle lanes. That was something that also came out of our original advisory committee meetings. Um, and then implementing raised median islands throughout that segment as well for traffic calming purposes. So this is one of the figures that kind of mimicked what we had originally looked like, looked at as a part of the advisory committee. Um, we previously didn't look at esplanade space, for example, just given the um, implications to costs and whatnot. And so that's something that we have looked at now as part of the iteration of these concepts. Alright, Goodridge Drive. So what you're seeing here is a single lane roundabout configuration. And so what we looked at is we looked at both Westwood Drive and Goodridge Drive kind of holistically and how they are impacted by the school traffic. And so where we ultimately ended up is that not, both intersections have their share of capacity issues like we talked about, um, where, where the LOS comes into play. However, in those situations where we have capacity constraints, we tend to look at traffic signalization as a solution. And so what ends up happening is that both of these locations, a traffic signal doesn't solve the issues that you're experiencing and neither intersection with the traffic volumes that are there today warrant a traffic signal by main DOT standards. And so what we looked at was, is there a way to alter traffic patterns such that more significant measures could be made at one location to try to solve some of the school traffic congestion? And so where we ended up was this roundabout configuration at Goodridge Drive. And so what this would require is the Goodridge Drive being altered to two-way flow between the schools. Um, and encouraging left turns that are currently happening onto Westbridge Drive and also off of Westwood Drive to use Goodridge Drive instead as the primary access point. So trying to relieve some of the congestion that's at Westwood, move that volume over to Goodridge and make a more significant change. Uh, a couple of other things about the roundabout configuration is it does provide opportunity for additional traffic calming and gateway treatment into the downtown. Um, similarly, uh, five foot sidewalks would be looked at on all approaches um, as well as crosswalks with RFBs. The bicycle lanes would be transitioned into the roundabout similar to Kelly Road for the same reasons as discussed. And then another piece of this is we would be looking to relocate the bus shelter that currently exists at Pine Street over to this area as well. Um, you'll notice, just prompting our discussions on right away, this is the right away line that we were talking about before. So this configuration would have impacts to the parcel on this co, on this corner.
Nikki?
Yeah.
Um, maybe this is not for you, maybe this is for town staff, but the schools did pretty extensive, um, like studies of their own about the traffic flow around the school and whether turning Goodridge into two-way traffic was possible or desirable for them. Can someone on staff or can you speak to whether there have been conversations with the schools yet about turning Goodridge into two-way traffic?
Yeah, so I, I met with the school, I met with Meredith a couple of weeks ago and, and went through the plan, understanding that these were concept plans and these were ideas. So it was, here's an idea, this could look at two-way traffic. Um, and they gave feedback on that, uh, which I have passed along, uh, and their concerns about restriction, some tight areas and whether it would work there and also just how they could move their traffic and their buses in particular, how that would look. Um, you know, in order to, to figure this all out, it's, it's a pretty extensive problem because it's not only the traffic that happens on Main Street, but it's the traffic that happens on the school property. So obviously it's not a, this is an idea and then, and then we would go from there. But we've, we've had that conversation and certainly will continue to have those conversations as we go through to find out if this is a, a, a viable, uh, you know, option, um, as we go through.
Makes sense. Thank you.
So we also have a visi- visualization at this area as well. Um, so here's what the intersection looks like today. And then here's what a roundabout configuration could look like. Alright, so moving into the downtown, here's an aerial of how things are kind of laid out today. So right now, the left turn lanes for the both Mill Street and Pine Street, um, as well as Bennet Road, aren't necessarily aligned with one another, which is not generally the preferred approach for intersection geometry. Uh, there's a right turn slip lane off Bennet Road, which creates kind of a challenging pedestrian um, connection at this point. Um, and right now there's kind of wide curb cuts as well along the parcels on this front edge. And so we've looked at two alternatives through the downtown as well. The first looks to kind of mimic similar conditions, but with uh, upgraded geometry. And so what that means is trying to align left turn lanes to better match one another. And so what we can do by doing that is reallocate the space elsewhere. And so what you'll kind of see, and I'll go back to this existing. So there's a full left turn lane here and a full left turn lane here. By altering this, such that they're opposing one another, it creates um, less space here for vehicular and adds the ability to add full bicycle lanes instead. And so that's where this is kind of a, an improvement from a multimodal standpoint. Uh, the, this alternative would also look to retain the signals at both Pine Street and Mill Street. So we would upgrade all the equipment. Uh, we would also try to re-time and re-phase things to get uh, more optimization for vehicular capacity through here. Um, all of the sidewalks would be redone, um, as well as upgrading crosswalks. And one of the big things also would be looking to remove that right turn slip lane on Bennet Road, which would shorten your crossing length, um, and provide a little opportunity to kind of alter the radius here and provide a little bit of green space. We also looked at access management reconfiguration and what that would look like and also providing um, some decorative kind of ornamental fencing on the backside of the sidewalk to provide a separation between the sidewalk and the parking lots that don't necessarily exist today. And the other thing I want to point out is right now there's an existing crosswalk at Oak Street that has a pretty significant skew on it. We would look to remove that and shift it down to uh, reduce the skew and provide RFBs as well. Um, and it's my understanding that there is an existing trail system that this would kind of line up um, more organically with.
Tried to skim back and look here, but there's no, there's no light back at the top of Oak Street and uh, on Main Street, right? Cause this said, this says utilizing for left uh, left turns would utilize uh, Juniper and Oak Street, Juniper, sorry, top of Juniper. Um, there's no street light added back at the top of Juniper, right? Cause that's kind of already a mess trying to get, take a left out of there.
So this configuration, um, nothing would change in terms of um, traffic patterns at Pine Street. So what you're referring to is actually under the second alternative that we can talk about uh, where that statement comes from. That's okay. So that's this configuration. Um, so we've looked at an opportunity as well to remove the signal at Pine Street to see what that would look like. Um, and so that's where that piece kind of funnels in. Where if we were able to remove the signal at Pine Street and Pine Street becomes right in, right out, how would that traffic kind of redistribute? And so the expectation would be that either lefts that were wanting to come out Pine Street would either utilize Oak Street or potentially Juniper Street as well. Lefts onto Pine Street would utilize the existing left turn lane onto Mill Street to access this back area. And so what we would ultimately we look to do is instead of utilizing additional pavement space at the intersection of Pine Street, we would provide a um, raised landscape island. So more green space into the downtown, um, a bit more traffic calming. Um, and also it would provide more vertical cues for the crosswalk at Pine Street with RFBs. Yeah.
If this alternative is pursued, I think it's important to note that the Oak Street intersection left turn is flagged at the public meeting as a place where there have been multiple accidents with bicyclists being hit um, coming down the sidewalk there. So um, I think we'd wanna look at that fence that's at the corner. Uh, I don't know if it's on private property or town property, but that fence blocks the view for left turn there. So especially if we're gonna increase the number of people turning left there, we should flag to look at that fence.
Okay, so there's existing kind of site issues between the bicyclists and the vehicles turning out of there.
Yeah, but the fence is actually not, there's space between the fence and the dumpsters. So I think it could be moved, but I don't know who owns it. But it came up at the public meeting and it's come up in my neighborhood several times. So it's a safety concern turning left there.
Okay.
So I would think it's important to flag that if we're pursuing this option, especially maybe just in general. Thanks.
And I do know as a, as somebody who walks down there a lot, it can be difficult to make a left turn onto Main Street there. And once we start funneling all the traffic from Pine or, um, yeah, um, Pine Street over there, it's just gonna make that even more. I, I like taking away that light, but I, the other problem is that the there's a very dangerous right-hand turn to get from Myrtle onto, onto um, Juniper. Very dangerous going downhill. And if we're funneling traffic that way, there's gonna be an accident in that neighborhood. Um, and so it's, I, I, I like this, but one more piece probably would have to be made to this to make it safe so that everybody, including myself, who lives um, you know, from Pine Street all the way to VZ can actually get from the library, which is gonna be a, a big new, great building that everybody's gonna wanna go to from that library all the way to VZ, they're gonna have, what do they, you know, they gotta figure out how to get that left-hand turn and make it safe. That's all. That's all.
Yeah, so there will be opportunity as well if the roundabout at Goodridge is. Um, implemented that those at Juniper Street as opposed to taking a left turn and I can, uh.
Yeah, you're making it right, it doesn't, it doesn't. Change the fact that there's really dangerous like ninety-degree turn at the bottom of Juniper, you're going straight downhill and then you make a. Ninety-degree turn onto Myrtle. And that's a, that is, um, or or coming the other way, you're making a ninety-degree up. Just makes it a kind of a difficult, that's a difficult street.
Good stuff.
Yeah, and it gets really sketchy in the winter, but I would imagine that there are some things that could be done on that street that would. Um, help make it a really slow zone.
Well, and just to be clear, I think this proposal wouldn't increase traffic coming down Juniper Street, because that's a right-hand turn on its side. It would only increase traffic coming up. And up is probably less dangerous, it was still difficult at the top in the ice, yeah, thanks.
Um, so with the reallocation of kind of space through here as well, um, the previous iteration of the downtown concepts. That we worked with the advisory committee on, um, wasn't able to get that dedicated bicycle lane space. Um, in both directions, and so one of the highlights of both of these alternatives is that now through the downtown, there will be. Dedicated bicycle lane space in both directions. Um, this alternative also looks at reducing Bennet Road to a singular lane, so. Basically what we had in the last concept, um, impacting even further, so altering this curb line out. Additionally, even further, so more green space, even shorter pedestrian crosswalk, and so. The, that option doesn't necessarily have to be implemented with one concept or the other. We were just looking at different alternatives there and and pairing them with concepts, but there's pieces of both of these that um can be intertwined.
Nikki, the point of narrowing those things is to increase pedestrian safety, it's certainly going to back up traffic even further, right? So it doesn't help with traffic flow, what does it help with?
So it creates a shorter crossing distance for the pedestrians, so it. It creates less time that they're exposed to vehicular conflict.
Thank you.
Yep.
I suspect we would have all of Forest Avenue, all of that road, right here at the meeting for that discussion.
It's a pretty big backup already.
You have to do that every day.
Alright, Nikki.
You do that every day.
Keep going.
Yeah, if it, if it's a pause, just jump on it.
Okay.
Presentation to a council about something like this.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure I'm not cutting anyone off, okay. Um, so we also, and this kind of gives a higher level like viewpoint of what the corridor could look like. With the roundabout, with the implementation of the island, with the changes in this area as well. And so one of the things that we had also looked at is just an aside for consideration is altering the Mill Street. And Pine Street in its entirety into what we call a one-way pair, where Pine Street would also become um one-way for a portion. This um diagram doesn't necessarily show that, but I just wanted to throw out that that was something that we considered as well. And so we looked at parking adjustments on Mill Street, changing those spaces from angled parking spaces to. Parallel parking spaces, which is um main DT's preferred alternative for parking striping. And so what that would look like is, there's forty-four existing spaces on Mill Street, altering to parallel parking would reduce by six spaces. For thirty-eight total, and so that's why we had looked at the option for the one-way pair and making uh Pine Street also one-way. And then looking for the opportunity to strike parking through there as well. Alright, moving across the bridge towards College Avenue. Um, at College Avenue, we also looked at two alternatives, the first. Uh, retaining the signalized condition, but trying to rework the intersection, one of the big pieces of feedback we got was that. Uh, Route Two doesn't really necessarily feel like the throughway through this intersection, it kind of comes in at three separate approaches. So trying to kind of rework the geometry to make it more of a throughway with College Ave as the side street. And so that's what this concept aims to do, while also reducing the existing really flat radius on this corner. Uh, while still accommodating uh large trucks, and so this space would ultimately be pavement removal and could become more significant green space. Um, College Ave in general is a little bit tighter in terms of availability for um improvements. And so we weren't able to retain the five-foot bicycle lanes consistently through the intersection. Uh, we tried to retain them where achievable, but in some areas, like you'll see this dashed line where the bikes would be transitioned into. The travelways and then basically transitioned back out through the intersection. The transition?
Uh, where did the bike lane disappear?
Right here.
So. If you can see my cursor, this dashed area. So coming from Park Street is one area where they would basically be in a. Full bike lane and then transition, this marking right here denotes shared space between a vehicle and a bicycle. On this approach, coming from Main Street, you would be able to retain the bicycle lanes. And then on College Ave, there is not existing bicycle lanes there today, so they would be in a shared con- condition, operating through the intersection. Um, similarly, sidewalks would all be upgraded through the intersection, new concrete sidewalks. Um, the crosswalks in the signalized condition would be upgraded to new equipment as well as. Um, upgraded for ADA considerations as well. And then also at, I'm gonna skip back to North Main Avenue, the crosswalk at this location would be um upgraded with RFBs. Which is one of the locations that we had identified as a high-crash location, um, the patterns that we saw here were a lot of rear ends. Uh, people stopping quickly for people in a crosswalk, and so the RFBs would provide additional visibility. Um, for vehicles for a long, longer stretch of time so that they could see that there was someone waiting in the crosswalk. And then alternative two looked at a single lane roundabout configuration. Again, providing opportunity for traffic calming and gateway treatment. One of the things that uh we've talked through with town staff is the future of this parcel on the corner. Um, you'll note that neither concept necessarily shows a driveway as. That sounds like something that's kind of been in flux, and so we've held off on putting anything for the time being. Um, but we acknowledge that that's something that would need to be worked through. With the roundabout configuration, um, there would be a good opportunity to provide a fourth approach leg here. Similarly, the bicycle lanes would be transitioned into the travel lanes, sidewalks would be upgraded where applicable. And then crosswalks would all be provided with the RFBs.
Nikki, can either you or other people who were here during the initial discussions around bike safety. Address the opinion of bicyclists about the roundabouts. Anecdotally, bicyclists I know have said they don't like them, that they feel like they're much less safe and harder for them to navigate because the bicycle lane goes away. But I'm just curious, do we have expert here in the room who is on the committee and Nikki's here, and are they generally considered? Less desirable for bicyclists and we're putting them in for traffic flow, or what is the general bicycle?
You have to ask Eric.
Okay.
Because I am a very cautious bike rider. And Josh, our previous police chief, said. He always lets children ride on the sidewalk when they don't feel safe in the road, and since I'm quite short. He let me, um. Have that privilege, so when I come to the places where the bike lane disappears, I usually dismount. Press the button and cross on foot or ride on the sidewalk.
So Nikki, am I correct then that the roundabouts are for traffic flow, but that there's less desirable generally for the bicyclists?
So bicycle accommodations at roundabouts are generally treated in one of two ways. It's either funneling the bikes into the travelway with the traffic or providing a wide shared use path. Exterior to the roundabout, um, which I think is generally what you have for a condition at Rangely Road where the bicycle lanes. Kind of transition off onto a wider path where they utilize the crosswalks. Um, we've looked at both options for the roundabout implementations. Um, and primarily, we just don't have enough space in a lot of these locations to also create that shared space. Outside of the roundabout. Um, and so in terms of transitioning. The bicycle lanes into the roundabout, the roundabout is creating a slower speed for the vehicles. Um, and so when the bicycles get transitioned in at that speed, it's a lot lesser than if they were in a shared lane. Elsewhere on a straight and tangent piece of roadway.
The, the challenge will be for like parents, kids who have, you know, like, it's one thing for. You know, Matt and I are mountain bikes to bomb through and kind of get into the flow of traffic, but people who don't feel comfortable that they can. That's kind of a, that's the first thing that comes to mind for me is, you know, how do you think about a goal for this project being? If your kid's old enough to go to the library by themselves and hang out for an hour, you know, you want an infrastructure that is accommodates that. To the greatest extent possible, and I, I think the roundabout is, it's, it's, we have, and we have experts in town that we'll certainly want to hear from. But I, and I, was I think about it in terms of a high-level conversation, that seems like something that will, a box that will need to tick off. So.
Thanks.
Yep, yes.
I, I'd encourage everybody to talk to Eric, so that he did tell me he liked the roundabouts and he probably knows more about.
We'll get him here, yeah.
Anybody else in the state.
Yeah, we'll have to get him here for sure for the public hearing, but, yeah.
Just so that you know, it's legal to ride your bike on the sidewalk.
Anybody, adults and kids here.
So, um, and so you can.
Just told me it wasn't, and he was the chief of police, so.
Well, Eric, Eric, it's a new law, Eric.
It is.
Said it's legal.
Town manager? My word, no, alright, we're not gonna put you on the spot.
Yeah.
Alright. Alright, let's go, thank you Nikki, Sarah, do you have, uh, Sonya, do you have something? You popped up.
I was just gonna chime in on the bicycle roundabout thing as someone who didn't have a car the first couple of years I lived here and. And also used to live in the suburbs of Chicago without a car. Um, roundabouts to me as a cyclist are much preferable to like multi-lane um intersections with lights. Um, I've had a lot of experience with both and, yeah, like. Roundabouts are, can be tricky, but I think as long as there are accommodations for kids to be able to cross safely at crosswalks, um. I feel good about them personally as a cyclist.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Back to you Nikki, you're doing a great job, thank you.
Thanks, alright, moving on to the visualization at this location, so here's what the intersection currently looks like. And here's what a roundabout configuration could look like. Alright, so advancing up Park Street, um, Park Street is pretty straight and tangent. Um, not as many major intersections of consideration, and so we've looked at. Similarly, the road diet configuration, so reducing the pavement wets with the eleven-foot travel lanes, five-foot bicycle lanes. New five-foot concrete sidewalks on both sides of the road with the separated esplanade space. Uh, one of the things of, with Park Street is that there are a number of kind of mid-block crossings in close proximity to one another between. Um, Allen Road and Crosby Street, and so what we've done is tried to find the preferable one location to provide. Additional uh accommodations, so that location comes out um right here where this is the existing baseball field. And trail, so that we've implemented the crosswalk at this location with a raised median island as well as RFBs. Um, another consideration as a part of this is to realign Crosby Street. Which is one of the things that had came out of the, both the Park Street study and also conversations, um. That Sabaiga was a part of for the Webster Neighborhood Study as well, and so. The advantages of this are also including a shortened crosswalk across Crosby Street, and so you can actually see kind of on this corner where the existing pavement is today. And so it's a much longer crossing than what's proposed as a part of this configuration. Alright, so then moving forward, um, I did skip over the Rangely Road roundabout. Uh, we did look at um several things at this roundabout just because it was still a high-crash location. Um, one of the things that we found as a part of that analysis was that. Uh, a number of the crashes were actually isolated to the easterly part of the roundabout, so where the roundabout is two lanes internally. And so one of the things that we had looked at was, is there a potential to make this a single lane roundabout? And try to reduce the, the, that crash frequency. And through our analysis, um, we just noted that the volumes there are too significant to use a single lane roundabout and reduce the size. And so we ultimately have not included that intersection as a part of the concept plans, um, moving forward. But I did want to make sure that I noted why that was passed over, especially given that the intersection was recently reconstructed a few years ago. Um, in terms of priorities for the entire corridor and looking at best use of dollars available. That was kind of left on the back burner. So Park Street, um, from Orchard Trails to Black Bear Lane where the reserve is, we looked at two different alternatives. And these alternatives span primarily from the crash frequency at. Um, Orchard Trails and Washburn Drive and through that segment. And so what we looked at was kind of the existing lane configurations, specifically at Washburn Drive first. Um, the existing intersection. Warrants a left turn lane into Washburn Drive just because of the sheer volume of opposing traffic that they're seeing, um. And so that kind of made us wonder, so if Washburn Drive requires a left turn lane, what other locations through the corridor may require a left turn lane? And so that's where this concept was bred from is primarily looking at kind of vehicular mobility. Um, if Washburn Drive could utilize that left turn lane, what does it look like if? All of the businesses through this corridor could utilize that space as well. And so that's the first alternative. And so one of the goals to here was to try to. Get as much of the traffic at Washburn Drive and Orchard Trails Drive to. Um, relocate as opposed to left turns off of. Um, the respective drives to become right turns, and so that's where I'm gonna skip ahead and then I'll come back. Um. That's where this idea was born from for the kind of what we're quoting as a turnaround roundabout. This was originally looked at as a part of the Park Street study that TY Lynn had done. Where the desire was with the implementation of the roundabout at this location. Maybe there is a way that we could encourage some of the um. Traffic coming off those side streets that are currently taking a left and contributing to crash patterns. To take a right instead, utilize this roundabout and turn around and head back towards the university. And so that. Was the consideration for this first alternative between the left turn lane and then also adding a right turn lane on Washburn Drive. In the hopes that if they had the space to bypass some of the people waiting there that had more significant delay. That they would be encouraged to um take that right turn and utilize the roundabout instead. Where we ended up with that is that ultimately, we would need to encourage. Fifty percent or more of the traffic that's taking a left off of Washburn Drive. To utilize that approach to make it worthwhile. Um, and to make impacts to level of service at Washburn Drive, and so if we're consistently kind of seeing that LOSF that we were talking about. What is, what amount of traffic needs to relocate to that roundabout to make it reduced to um a better level of service? And so when we see kind of those level of service Es and Fs, that's when we start to see the crashes happen. And so what we're trying to do is reduce that level of service and ultimately what that crash potential looks like. And so that was the um hope with the first alternative. Because of the kind of requirement that it would take to um get that level of traffic to self. Essentially teach themselves to utilize that approach, we also looked at an option for, well, what if the decision essentially wasn't made for them? And we implemented a raised median island instead throughout this segment, so basically encourage. All of the traffic on these side streets and driveways to utilize that roundabout to turn around and make safer maneuvers. All of the traffic on these side streets and driveways to utilize that roundabout to turn around and make safer maneuvers. And so this is the concept that you're seeing as a part of alternative two. This wide raised median island uh measured at twelve feet. There's opportunity for green space and landscaping and more of a multimodal type feel through the area. And so this is what the segment looks like today. And this is what it could potentially look like with that type of implementation where. Traffic is divided, you have a singular lane of traffic and a bicycle lane. Espinod and sidewalk as well. The trade-off here is that you're getting. You're reducing vehicle or you're increasing vehicular travel times for. A more multimodal feel. And also encouraging or not necessarily encouraging, but requiring. Reallocation of traffic patterns as a part of this. So you're removing essentially the decision-making piece. And so then that's into. The roundabout that we already talked about, because this kind of all goes together as one big piece. And then that was the end of what I had proposed for the concept plans. Is there anything on that last piece that we just touched on on Park Street? That we want to circle back on real quick?
Yeah, just one second, we'll come back, we'll do a couple.
So the only thing that I wanted, the two pieces, one is uh maybe an opportunity if Claire. DOT wants to um talk about any of this. And I, I know that we had spoke about, we have a, a property owner here that is. Not going to be able to be here for the twenty-fourth.
So who are we gonna hear from Claire? Anything else from you, Claire?
Yeah, Mitch, I, I guess I can give a little bit more information now that Nikki's kind of walked through everything on. The next steps after this phase. Because I know there is maybe a little bit of confusion over. The process. So after this planning phase. Wraps up, the next stage is preliminary engineering. And that's the second phase, the third phase will be construction. And the second phase of preliminary engineering. Uh, in the, in the past, it's typically. Been a cost share. Of fifty fifty with state money and then local cost share. And the most important takeaway, I think, for this group. Is that we've been working, Maine DOT has been working on updating our local cost share policy. We're trying to finalize that, hopefully finalize it in the next couple of weeks. And the cost share for preliminary engineering is changing. And it's significantly going to decrease the local share. So typically for that phase of PE. That's typically about ten percent of the total cost for construction for a project. Just to give you an idea of what that phase specifically costs. And that phase can take, depending on the complexity of the project, it can take. Between like a year to up to twenty-four months, it depends on the complexity. But that's where the plans that we've developed here are kind of brought to a level. Of looking at more in-depth at things like right-of-way that was mentioned, utilities. Environmental considerations, land survey. That's the work that's done in the preliminary engineering phase that's critical for. Getting us to a point of submitting for an application for the federal funding. And I should also just quickly clarify from what Mitch said earlier that. In terms of the federal funding for the construction phase. FHWA. The Federal Highway Administration, they release like a notice of the funding opportunity. For these grants for like things like the RIS grant. And that changes, that can change every year. So it's not necessarily like, oh, November is the only time to apply, like for instance, I believe. This past year it came out in February, the deadline was in February. So, but we keep an eye on that kind of thing. We're paying close attention to when these postings are made, when deadlines are. So that we're well-prepared for applying for that construction funding. But if there's any, any further questions about kind of the PE phase or anything else. Yeah, please just let me know.
I, go, go ahead, Leo.
Do you have, do you think that it's going more towards like an eighty-twenty, or do you have any sense for that, that you're willing to? Throw out there?
I'm, I'm not allowed to confirm. I believe this meeting is recorded, uh, and I'm only, I'm not even a year in at my job. So I can't, I can't confirm, but I like the word significant, I think is important and it will be a significant change from the fifty fifty. That it was previously.
In terms of this process, that was a good question, Leo. Um, I thought we were gonna get her for a second. In terms of this process, Claire. At what point does? The D, what's the, the difference between the, it's. The department, the main department of transportation and the town of Orno, I mean, is the town of Orno gonna decide, you know? Sidewalk by sidewalk, curb, curb by curb, how this is done, or is we, do we put a concept together? And then at some point it becomes DOT's. Kind of project in terms of what the final, final configuration looks like. With, with this uh, uh, speed table on Forest Avenue and I, you know, it was fabulous, but I don't, you know. I don't think we want to do that, you know, all the way down Route Two. So what's, how does that work? When, to a point this?
Yeah, so this, this whole process is definitely a partnership and, you know, I think it's this phase, we've been in the planning phase. And part of this initiative, that planning phase is municipally led. Uh, by the time we get to the preliminary engineering phase, that is where it kind of switches over, not to say you're not still very much involved. Um, but I think that's the point where we're taking kind of this transformative vision. And trying to actually see how it would be implemented, how this would all work in the project area.
Thank you. It's always good to have a higher authority around sometimes when you gotta make some tough local decisions to at least, you know, bounce stuff off, so. And expertise.
So on the preliminary engineering stage, again, I, I think maybe just to recap, because I don't know if folks might tune into this meeting and not have been in previous ones. My understanding is whatever the cost is to the town during the preliminary engineering stage. That's a cost that we would have to choose to incur not knowing yet whether we were going to get the federal grant or not, correct?
Yes, yeah, that's right.
Okay, so it's a bit of a gamble for us. We put in this money on the engineering study in the hopes that we get the grant. And maybe staff can remind me, I should have this memorized, but we haven't looked at this in so long. The page Sophie gave us about upcoming big projects that might be bonded out. What is the potential total cost on this Route Two corridor project?
Total cost with the engineering, because I don't, I don't know that. What, what we were looking at prior to was the construction piece being. Ten, eighty federal, ten state, ten. Um, and so it was, if it's a thirty million dollar project, it'd be three million local.
Right, so our, our point. And the numbers that were on that page were thirty million total, three million to us, or was it, what was it approximately on the page we saw? Does anyone remember?
That feels right.
Total three million to us for the project.
So in terms of the cost of the engineering study, it's ten percent of the thirty million just for the engineering study. And then we're waiting to hear what percentage of that would be the town share we would have to essentially gamble in the hopes of getting the federal grant. Is that fully correct numbers-wise? Can staff correct me?
Oh, if I heard you correctly.
So three million roughly is the, is the preliminary engineering, roughly ten percent, three million. And our portion is today, we take half of that and we don't know where it's going. If it were twenty percent.
Those are rough numbers, right?
Okay, roughly currently, if the policy wasn't changed, we'd be looking at one point five million our share and our share is gonna come down significantly. According to Claire, which we're waiting with bated breath to find out what it is. Is that all correct?
I don't, yeah, let's, careful not to concret these things and I don't like the term gamble and I don't like the term.
We don't know, there's not a definitive answer.
Certainty is not a word we can use, but yeah.
And just to be clear, the DOT has done a really good job with these and has, has had really good success getting this money.
That was my next question is what is DOT's success on these grants was my next question.
Yeah, I was just gonna add to the context and say, yeah, like we, we can't guarantee anything. However, we have a really strong track record of applying for these grants. Um, in Maine, we have a really good shot. Um, and we wouldn't, we wouldn't work on these projects if we didn't feel incredibly confident. That we would, could put together a really successful application. And the other context that I should mention as well. Because I was just talking to someone else at DOT is just that Orno also has the congressionally directed spending. Amount that was awarded. I believe it was two point four million and that can be applied to the construction. Funding portion as well, so.
I, I'm sorry, Claire, was that around the directly, the, the federally, the congressional direct spending?
Yeah, congressionally directed spending. That's kind of like. It's earmarked for the future, so.
Right, you do, and that can be applied to the construction side, but that also has a match to it, correct?
Yeah, it's just applied to the construction phase.
Not the P.
Alright, so we had a couple. People have been, the panelists have done a fabulous job, thank you. We had a couple of members of the public who, um, I saw a hand, I, I. I blew out, so sir, could you introduce, we'd be quick, because there's another, another public hearing and then we have a property owner who's not gonna move to join us, so. We can indulge the conversation, not indulge, but. Continue the conversation for another minute or two, that'd be great. You introduce yourself, sir?
I'm Daniel McQuine. Um, I have a bit uh concerned that this is a bit myopic. If you go north on Park Street and Duford Lane, there is an open space behind the university. That could be opened up. University traffic is what really balls us up. And I mean, when it happens, we're packed. And things like events, the. Uh, Collins Center or any of the athletics. The other thing that isn't looked at or not mentioned at all is from the university across the river, building a bridge. To Godfrey Drive and touching Bennet Road. There is more than enough outlet to take every single bit of traffic and relieve us. Of all the bottled traffic, even the, this lovely diagram that is being presented to us. It still has a bottling before the bridge. The bridge is a construction and also the property. We, we have a problem with ownership of property. And uh, I would ask, who, who is we of this lady who represented? I heard that word several times, I don't know who she is. And, and I'm a bit concerned, the risk that is being brought forward here. And while it, it sounds really good. I mean, it does sound, I, I'm a more than a bit concerned of property. Is the inappropriate taking of the property by a non-legislative body. Saying, oh, this is a great idea, let's go take somebody's road frontage, I'm sorry. But you know, our contracts are something that is other gear to us. And I, I want to say taxes. I have people in this community, friends of mine. On, on social security that struggle with these taxes and. At this time, because they've taken us mis, misbehave off the oil standards as far as globally. We are at great risk and our debt is huge. You know, uh, I think fiscally, we need to think about the elderly within our community. Who struggles to do taxes. And there's nothing there. And once the foreclosure happens on property taxes. Those folks never compensated for their properties when it's taken, never compensated. And so we have an issue here.
Okay.
And it's all about taxes. The property and contracts of property being taken are all, all well and good, what, what was being mentioned here, lovely. But it has a cost and maybe not, this might not be the time, but if we look. North Park Street coming in from Duford, across from Duford Lane. A backside of the university, because it benefits the university. And by the opposite, uh, Rangeli Road Observatory, all that beautiful land and all the way to the river by the steam plant. Can be a, a bridge. Uh, across the river. And to Godfrey Drive and Bennet Road, my gosh, that would relieve every bit of, I mean, our traffic would be. Well off, we consider that one, I heard no consideration of that.
Okay, and we'll have public comment periods, meetings between now, you know, several meetings between now and the chance that people have. So Jim, was it, yes, you, you introduce yourself and share your concerns?
My name is James Duben. I actually own sixty-nine Main Street, which is the Harvard Bank and Trust Building. That's the first concern I have, a really, really big concern now, where they want to put this roundabout. As this, if you know the facility, we have a double entrance. I have twenty parking spaces, we have our own lane to take care of our drive-through, which is two lane. They want to make that two lane. Drive-through exit, my only exit. Want to take away my Main Street and make me come in down off the road by the school. It's terrible. I mean, they want to take seventy-five percent of my road frontage and they want to take a third of my parking and driving. Yeah, I've got five businesses in there. I've got the bank and I've got four professional people upstairs. We have the right amount of parking and we have the right amount of egress to make my property work. But if you take a third of the property away and two of my exits, I can do away with maybe one exit, but I need to come in and there, that, one of their. Ways to fix this is to put it, when you come in down here, to come in the back part of this parking lot, it's probably from that parking lot. To the next park, from that road to the parking lot, there's at least a four to four and a half foot draw. And then from the end of the parking lot to the road, there's probably another five foot. Probably from the road to the back of my property, nine foot draw. It doesn't even make sense, let alone what it does to the value of the place. If you can't rent it because you don't have parking. When this building was built, it was all approved with the parking, egress and all that. You know what I mean? I was very lucky, Mitch went with me and walked both of my properties and talked to them. That's a huge concern of mine and it doesn't even look like. To me, a streetlight solved a lot of it, might not be the perfect answer, but a streetlight wouldn't take all my property and hurt my real estate and all my tenants. And I think this would be changed even a little more, so more than one person took some of the brunt, not just one landlord. So, and again, I went through all my concerns and I'm trying to ask because I know you're into her.
No, thank you.
You know, so that's that property. And, and I, I just foresee it during the busy times, now that we can only come in off that. The people aren't even gonna get to come and go to the businesses there. Because they're not gonna let them in and people don't give anybody an inch. So having my own access is very important. I don't know if you have any questions about the property or if you don't know it, I can try to answer anything I can about it.
Questions, but I guess I don't understand, and I didn't understand and probably not time to get into it, but I'm, what, what would be the proposed, just to take that property to compensate? What, what is that taking? Because that's not right away, I know that. So what is eminent domain?
Maybe, uh, I don't know if Claire can speak to it, but at that point it becomes a state project. And that point the state would negotiate with landlords based on what's going on. Is that fair, Claire?
Yes, but I guess I am not specifically talking about this property. But just in general, in this planning phase, we're trying to avoid, we're trying to stay in the public right-of-way. In general, to avoid situations where we're taking private property.
So that's an option, you're here expressing your concern with that option, appreciate that.
And then I'll move to my next location.
Sure.
Thirty-one Main Street, Woodman.
I have never seen you at Woodman.
So that's, what they want to do there is. As when anyone that knows Woodmans, you come up on top of the hill and you drive into park. That is a deeded right-of-way to me. It's only for egress. You can come in that way, you can't park there, if you park there, you get towed. They're very strict on that. That's how you get into our business. The exit. Is down by the building, because that used to be years ago, it was a drive-through, it was a bank. I've had. Some chances to even have other drive-throughs in there, but it didn't work out. But one, I would never want to lose my opportunity to do that, as part of the building, that's how the whole parking lot was set up. And right now you pull in and you can park at the back of the lot, or you can park towards. But again, it's a three and a half, four foot drop off from where you drive in to where you park. They want to make my new entrance. Where that bottom of that three foot drop is and do away with it on the lower end. They want people to park against the building. Where that bottom of that three foot drop is and do away with it on the lower end, and they want people to park against the building. I'm going to lose at least two, maybe three spots by doing that there, and as it is now, we have barely enough parking for our, for the tenant. Um, so we definitely wouldn't want to lose any. And they say they're doing it because it's too many curb cuts and trying to do that, but if you look at it, the urban. If you have their exit, my exit be the same, which doesn't affect them and doesn't affect me. Because they own it and I have the right to use it. And keep my cut where it is. You're not gaining any, or savering, you know, you're not adding anything. They want to move everyone further away from where my property is. You see it on here, the way they describe it. Which, they have a very wide entrance, though like mine and theirs is huge, you could shrink that up towards the part where I have a right of way on. People could still egress very easily and still get to my property and to theirs. So that would solve that and make that smaller. My mind is, they're just moving it from one side of the parking lot to the other, they're not doing away with it. So it, it makes no sense, because I'm going to have to give up parking and the chance. Woodmans is there, been there fifteen years, they might be there another five or ten, but you never know, they might not. And there's other businesses that would want to drive through that might come in there and it's set up for them. If you move that, you're never going to get it in there. It's never, you're never going to be able to drive in and then try to get back out way over it there. It's not going to work, the way that flows works well.
Well, thank you, I'm glad you're here and I know, I mean, I'm sure you were by, assumed by invitation or at least by prior notice, so I appreciate that you were able to share with us directly and. I know that we'll be, you know, got to be mindful of the property owners who are most affected. We all want a better corridor, but we got to think. A great deal about the property owners who are affected, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for meeting.
Very much.
One more, Dan?
Uh, I, I don't know if I said my name, my name is Daniel McQuine.
Yep, we heard you.
Okay. Kind of upsetting what I heard this gentleman speak about his property rights. It was upsetting very much.
Thank you for emphasizing that. Anyone else?
One, one quick thing, Brad from Cervego's, go ahead, Brad, you're good to go. Just unmute.
That, uh, I raised my hand mistakenly, sorry Mitch, I didn't have anything more to add.
Okay, well, that's Brad from Cervego.
Hey, Brad.
Hey guys, how y'all doing? Just want to make sure I said hi to everyone, good to see you all.
I did a lot of time on. Linda, you had something too?
Yeah, uh, hey Linda, um, so I, uh, am really concerned about one of the proposals here. I, um, look at the end of Kohler Drive. And so the proposal here, um, is one of the proposals to, um, force a right-hand turn. To go all the way down, to go around about, to go left. Uh, enforcing other side streets, um, is a big concern to me, I want to be able to turn left and I'm also concerned about emergency services. Are, if an ambulance comes down my way, um, are they going to have to be forced to turn right, go around the roundabout in order to go left? Um, so I, um, I really do not like that idea.
Gets you closer to Old Town every time you get in the car, but no?
No, uh, also, just as an observation, because I already use the roundabout.
Yeah.
Kind of on, on park.
Yeah.
Almost every day, and one concern that I've, I've kind of observed is that, um, sometimes people kind of race each other. To get on the roundabout and I have never used my horn so many times in Orno than on that roundabout. So, kind of the speed on the roundabout, people jockeying to kind of be the first one on the roundabout itself. Is also a little bit of a concern, um, so, uh, I just.
Thank you, I appreciate it, um, but I think, Mitchy, we ready to. I think we'll have an opportunity to, it's, the, we've got the public meeting on the, on the twenty-fourth. I, I do think in terms of bringing, I think we had some good kind of, this was a great dress rehearsal for that and really appreciate the work that staff and consultants have done. I do like the idea, I hope we'll think about as we, as we introduce the concepts for the, um, the public hearing, I think it would be helpful to talk. Broadly in the initial about concepts and what we're trying to achieve, it's hard, I think it's hard for me to understand what, um. You know, lane dieting or what was the track, like, the diet term that we were talking about? What, what are those all about? Stack together, what are we hoping to achieve and why do those things contribute to that in a way that I think that would be helpful? Um, and I, I guess that is it for this? Yep, okay, one more thing, question?
And again, I have to leave town, but I'm here the next few days, if anybody would like to walk the property with me like I did with Mitch. More than glad to show it to you, because I think seeing it really makes you understand it better.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that.
Rob? I mean, I got something to say, I mean, I, I'm sure that we will over the course of this process, but, um, I mean, just these concerns that have already been raised. How, how can we ensure, um, that we build into this really robustly input from people? I mean, I'm sure that's already been done over the course of this process, there's been a lot of public input, I appreciate, but especially the concerns of property owners, business owners along this. Uh, how, I guess, I don't know exactly what I'm asking, just. Um, it seems like a really high priority as we go about doing all of this, to, to figure out how to best incorporate this.
Okay, that's my thing.
I guess this is sort of a follow-up, but my question was similar, which is. Could staff tell us what kind of outreach is going to be happening to the community between now and the twenty-fourth? Will there be letters mailed to people who live on this corridor, are we simply relying that people will? Hear about it on our website, or how are we really pushing this out so that the largest number of. The public in general, but especially property owners most affected are hearing about this meeting on the twenty-fourth?
They force out this month or next?
This month.
Twenty-fourth this month.
Yeah, so, so ultimately, the, the goal was to push it out through social media and, and put it out that this meeting was happening. But also that we would have time. This, this would be the launch, we'd put everything on, so people can actually go and listen to what Nikki has said. We'll put the video from this meeting, so they have some information going in, because it's really hard to just go someplace and get this and then try to decipher it, right? So we're trying to get it out there to have that public conversation and invite people along. Um, certainly, we can look at different ways to try to find people on the corridor, whether it's sending letters, it's, it's difficult with the timing we have, but. But I, I, I think trying to get the word out there to do that, but also having time after that. So that people can either watch the public meeting and then comment, because not everybody is going to want to participate anyways even. But watch it, then give feedback to us like we did after the last one, and we got a, a lot of, uh, of feedback. We also take all the feedback at the public meeting and write all that stuff down and then. Then, uh, put it out there, and I have met with a number of different people already and basically listened, write all down and send it, send it along. So we're, that, that's kind of the, the process that we've taken. Certainly, I would encourage anybody along the way to reach out to us if there are specific things that you think we should be doing. We're open to, to hearing that and trying to figure out how to make that happen.
I don't have any particular, uh, decisions, I guess it's more of a question, because I don't know how these things operate, um. Like when there is negotiation with a landowner, with a property owner. Where there is a desire to cut into that, uh, I mean. Maybe this is way too broad a question about just like how those negotiations go, or how it's built in real. Uh, consideration of the concerns of those, those people, I, I, I guess I just don't know enough about how this works. Um, and how, like when this is, uh, this. This plan is developed, uh, I, I assume over the course of this, there will be. Um, when, when there are people who are so significantly impacted, um, I, I assume there would be, there would have to be direct conversations with them. About those plans, and I assume it's not just a forcing of them to accept the plan, at a certain point, there's a, how, how does one negotiate like to. Whether you move something, you know, ten feet along, where it's no longer affecting like an exit from this business owner. I, I assume that shifts a ton of other stuff on the project, so. I just, I just have a lot of questions, I guess, and I don't, I don't expect you to have any answers for them.
Well, I appreciate that, because I, I truthfully don't have a specific answer to those questions. Other than the fact that these, these things and these projects, they happen all the time. And I've never been on either side of that, I think we've had, I've had conversations with Jim and this. This specific thing to talk about, what are the concerns, so we can bring those early and so we can try to address as much of that as possible, so that. These processes are as easy as possible. Uh, once again, it will not be, this is a, it will be a state project.
Yeah.
So it will be the state dealing that, not us, um, and I don't mean to shift the blame, I just mean that's, that's the process that's there. I don't know if you have something to add.
No, and I just, maybe for, uh, Claire to confirm, I've been through multiple DOT road projects, some on Route Two. Another community near here. What you do have to understand is it is a state-owned road, they have some significant policies and how to interact, but this process. Right here, it's an evolution of improving they used to do fifteen, twenty years ago. So start, you know, and this is, I don't think there's any goal towards perfection, and maybe there's an MDOT. Summary of when they started these, uh, the, the village planning initiatives and the BPIs. But it was all to bring more public input in earlier, because I'm, I don't know how far you'd have to go back, but you wouldn't have to go very long. Find out, they'd go to full engineering, they'd work with the community and city planners. And the next thing you know, there's a road project, and then they take comments and maybe tweak some things, maybe not. But when it comes to land, if there's takings, they have some laws that they have to adhere to. And, you know, it's, it's a process, is it balanced? Um, I think that's in the depend, the eye of which side you're on at the time that it's occurring, you know, and that's, that's a tough one. I can get some more on that, probably from a few people, and maybe Claire can help get some more of when this process kind of first kicked off.
Yeah, we could talk locally about what we can do to make sure that, you know, as, as a council, as, as the elected representatives of the community, we could talk about. What, what the town's doing and what the council can do to make sure that points of view, you know, we're going to have a vision and how, how it went to different points of view and. Specific economic interests could be, you know, is considered and. I think, I think it needs to be really meticulous.
In the earlier on, we can incorporate those things, sorry, now you're saying, you just have your hand raised, but I think the, the more likely we can. Make sure that we're doing right by all the folks who will be affected in, in this project that we do want to see happen.
Sarah?
Yeah, on that, one, one question I just had Mitch was whatever the notes that staff is taking from these. Private conversations with landowners and other community members emailing in that's being compiled and sent to the project team. Is that something that can also be sent to council? So that we can actually read who, who is writing in with concerns, I mean, not everybody may come to meetings, we may not therefore hear them directly. And we're ultimately tasked with sort of saying yes or no on this project, I guess I'm curious if that document is something that. We have the ability to see and read through what people's concerns are.
I'd be, I'd be concerned about forcing staff and citizens to turn, you know, like as a part of the process, like you can't talk to Mitch Stone unless you agree to email.
No, I said, whatever was already being created and sent to this project team, is it something that can be added to the council drive so we see it, or is it not?
Well, just sorry to piggyback on that, maybe, maybe the encourage, we do encourage people to send it to council. Chair, just one, if it's easier, or, or copy everyone's just as, should be just as easy, but. Uh, I think we should encourage that. That we get sent, I, you know, the burden of like, okay, make sure we're able to see everything. But it, it's, it's a pretty big deal, these are pretty significant changes, um, and I, I do hope we can tie it back to. Uh, well, Lisa said it was traffic calming, traffic circulation and pedestrian, it's like this kind of safety. I mean, because some of these I think are really, they're really attractive looking renderings and, but. Um, some of them doesn't, doesn't feel to me, like especially the forest that, that growth, I mean, doesn't feel like we're helping congestion, that's a. And I don't know if that's really that, I mean, if that's in conflict with. Um, traffic calming versus congestion, those are two different things, I guess. I think most people care about, well, they care about both.
Yeah.
Um, but, um, I think it should tie back to the, if, if those are the real things that we're trying to accomplish. I, you see, it feels to me like we might have missed the congestion that should have been, and, and I can't say that, you know. I know Lisa, I appreciate your, off your, off the cuff, you know, with the shape of that, that's more than I would have been able to come up with, but. But traffic congestion still feels like an issue with some of the stuff, and certainly the taking of property is a big, big concern for, for me.
Dan, what does it seem like for the, for the council, I mean, we need to definitely be aware of what is said at this next meeting. Um, and take that into account and make our desires clear as a council, when, especially after that meeting. How to incorporate, as we've heard as well, it's like, I guess, i- is it for us to give some more direction after that to the planning? To incorporate these things, um, and in the meantime, we, we just got to be aware and be responsive.
Yeah, I think it's, it's going to be very. Hard for us to, uh, I, I don't want to create the expectation that we are, um. Taking ownership of every comment that comes through and creating the expectation that, I mean, I think it's, we have to have a process where people can be heard. And that, I think that lends to legitimacy, the outcome, and, and that's what you want ultimately, if, if we're going to make an improvement that. It's in everyone's best interest, it may not be in everyone's immediate or, you know, personal interest. So how do we get a process that gives people a chance to be heard, a chance to make. You know, change, help, you know, alter the project in, in ways that make sense, but still move it ahead, so it's. We may, may have to come together for another meeting or something to talk about specifically what our role will be for that, but.
But I guess.
I don't think we're, we're not going to decide it right now, I don't think, yeah.
But I do think for the public, that's sort of what I'm asking, I'm saying, if, you know, we need to be clear for people, if they want council to hear what they have to say. Sounds to me like what I'm hearing is they either have to come to the public meeting, which is on the twenty-fourth, or they need to directly email council. Or is it possible, Mitch, that what you're compiling and sending out to the DOT team is also something that we can just see in the council drive? I just want people to be clear where their comments are going.
Yeah, I, I mean, maybe the easiest thing is if somebody is emailing. Their information to the Route Two Quarter Project at Orno is copying from either the council chair or copying the council if they want on that, that's. That would then get you their comment that they sent into us and you will see that, that's probably the easiest thing. Obviously, any of the comments from the people, I can share the document that I've created that is just compiling. My, my conversations with, with, you know, stakeholders, it's really, and, and affected people, and I haven't, certainly haven't met with everyone, I just. The, most of the major ones, um, and this is a concept right now, um, to understand. We put it on the paper to say, hey, let's get feedback, that's what we're looking for, so that you can come up with. A, a plan that ultimately the community's going to have to agree on to say, yeah, we're looking to move forward and, and into these next phases of this, so.
I think that would be great Mitch, because I think people might have an assumption that their feedback is going both to staff and council. And I just want to be clear if it isn't, because, you know, so far, we, we aren't necessarily seeing all the feedback that's coming in. And it sounds like we ultimately are charged with making some decision about it, so. For me, I love your suggestion, just forward the emails or forward the document, I don't care, but I think it's better for the public. If their feedback kind of goes everywhere to everyone involved in the decision-making process, the team and the staff and the council, as a citizen, that's what I would.
So just so we're clear, my thought on the email is that we would put stuff up that if you want your information to also go to the council, copy. Council on the email you send to us.
Yeah.
Not, um, you know, from that way, as opposed to me forwarding.
Back to us and can you, can you articulate that in email? Or maybe, maybe it's appropriate for Clint to send it back to us, but just sort of a, something that answers that question, so we got it, if we can respond to it. That, that would be, thank you very much.
Piece of feedback for, um, Nikki or whoever, just as the community members had questions and comments on certain parts of the project. I found it very hard to figure out what exact picture people were talking about, so perhaps putting page numbers on here. Let's say slide one, slide two, or something like that, so when a community member has a comment, they can say. On slide eight, and everybody can go there and know exactly what diagram we're talking about would be helpful, thanks.
Alright, and then, um, the folks going to be with us in person next time? Yep, especially Brad.
Yep, Brad, right center.
Great, alright, so we're not going to vote on this tonight, right? We don't want to vote on, so we're going to move on. Thank you, thank you very much to the panelists, it was, I mean.
Thank you all.
Sorry it took so long, but it was incredibly helpful and informative, thank you. Thanks, Brad.
Thank you all.
Keep saying, yeah, thanks.
Thank you Nikki.
Thank you Nikki, you did a great job. Alright.
You're plus through the rest of it.
James, you don't get to, James, you don't get to leave, man, you got to stay till very yet. Thanks for coming in. Um, alright, the next item up is, and Sarah, you want to take this one? Nominations, evaluations, and council policies committee?
Oh, I thought I was just on for number three, but, uh, it's fine. Um, Council Kenny had brought up that we wanted to look at a general roles and responsibilities of counselors discussion. You know, you have something you wanted to share about that, or. Um, I think the last conversation I remember, Leo, we talked about how a way to do that might be to incorporate that into the policy and procedures manual. The council policy procedures manual, which delineates the roles of council. But I think we weren't sure if there was some other way you also wanted that talked about.
Yeah, and this maybe just a, just a high level. I, it, I think we've obviously been in transition for, I thought, three or four months, it's been eight. And I think throughout that process, there's been a, a bit of a, some maybe bad habits formed of council. Working with staff. Because, because we had a, for whatever reasons, and, and previously. And, and I think that's, I think it's, it's set up this way by design, is we've got conduit through our town manager. That's where all of our communications effectively go. And so there's no confusion and we, we've had. And so there's no confusion and we, we've had, we met with staff six months ago, well. Nine months ago now, I guess, uh, about the concern about us working direct with staff and I just wanna make sure. That we're sort of getting, that we're back in that mode of working through. The town manager for our. We'll say wins, but our thoughts and, you know, there's anything we have to do goes through there and the other, the other piece, and we talked a little bit about this. For things not to come up in, in council where we're sort of, hey, staff, can you do this sort of thing and, and, you know, we're gonna put this on staff. I think all of that has to be kind of formally gone back through town manager. Not putting anyone on the spot to say, yes, we can do this or we can't do that and, and have it, it's, it's kind of the way it's always worked. And it's, we've kind of, I feel like we've digressed a bit and for many legitimate reasons, and I would like to see us getting back to that.
So I. And I appreciate acknowledging the transition and things like that. And I guess I would ask, how does that differ when we had conversations about like the Webster project? And we talked about waiting for a new public works director to come on and things like that. How does it differ that, that, you know, you let, you led, how does that differ? How would that have been different? I mean, were you? Is that a departure from what you're asking for or, you know, like, we, like I've, you know, like, I know I've asked for, I've had some projects that have put work on staff. And I know that they show, my thinking is. You ask the town manager and the town manager's gotta make a decision about staff resources and availability. It's like when we, when we agreed to table the Webster thing last, at our last meeting, so you, there'd be a chance for, that was a big ask of staff. And it was driven by, you know, driven by your, you know, giving you the room, you know, acknowledging that you wanted, so.
I specifically about that one, I honestly felt like that we should have had the opportunity to have that in a, in a subcommittee meeting, not having it come.
Yeah.
Right there, we, you know, it's the first, it's the first we've seen of the proposals and there were some, I thought enough issues that it warranted having a subcommittee meeting. Where we could have as deep of a, of a conversation, so. I, yeah, that one, that one, it is again, it did theoretically go back through the, the town manager, I think, it is going through the town manager. So. The, but often I, it, it feels like we're coming up with, we wanna do thing, well, the, the, um. The, that's on here, many grants thing, ended up being, okay, well, staff's gonna, staff's gonna, you guys can do that, right? I just, that's a, that's a, not a good precedent to set that we're having that kind of, hey, staff, can you do that? And I brought that up last time that. Because they're not, no one's in a position to say, no, we can't, we're, cause we don't, I don't know what they're doing, none of us know what they're doing, so we don't know what how, how piles on. And it's just been standard practice that when we've got things that we are looking at doing, uh, and I think there's some of this probably within, uh, what Sarah's gonna talk about maybe. As well that we have the conversation. Clint takes it away and Clint comes back and tells us versus sort of the instant. Hey, this is how we're doing it.
Yeah. I do, you know, I do. I think the training, we're gonna do, Rob, go ahead, if you wanna go.
I, I can wait until after what.
Well, we're committed to do training with, with Clint as part of his contract and that could very well be a big, you know, part of, and that could lead to, I mean, Sarah's got a, a really. I, I, I wanna do it the right way and I wanna make sure that the town manager is, is doing. You know, for all of us, when we have an issue or concern, the town manager is the person who's supposed to decide. What the resources are and how to allocate it. We direct the town manager and ultimately. Really only direct the town manager when we vote on things. I mean, that's kind of the. But a good town knows how to, you know, knows how to work with her, with the council and I think Clint's been down, not his first rodeo on these kinds of things, so. Uh, I do like the idea that training could be a part of that in terms of helping us understand what Clint's expectations are. And that's why Clint was so savvy to ask for it, I think, in his contract. So I, I just, I throw that out there as an opportunity for us to dig deeper into it and I am sensitive, you know, I wanna be sensitive to it too.
One thing that comes to mind for me around all of this is, uh, I mean, it's sort of related to what you said, like, we're really in the directing town manager when we vote on a thing, um. Formally directing, I mean, I think we are a body, I mean, we are seven. Individuals who are, who all have some sway power here, but I think. The more we can, when giving directives to staff through the town manager. Be discussing what we're asking for together and not just, you know, I think a lot of us individually. Have asked for things and it's taken like, okay, it's up to the staff to figure out. How do I manage all of these asks from all the counselors? If, if we could. I mean, I still think there's, there should be room for counselors to be able individually ask for information, um, especially through like a phone call with the town manager or something, but I think in meetings. Figure out how we can channel all of our respective desires, needs, asks. Through some sort of process that I don't know what it looks like and I don't, I'm not saying it has to be incredibly formal. But some way for us, maybe through you. Facilitating a conversation or through the chair of the subcommittee that's discussing it to, to figure out how to summarize. In addition to the town manager's already existing responsibility to figure out how to. Summarize what, what's being asked of them. Um, how we can cut down on the, the lengthiness and. Uh, density of the asks by collaborating on a, a formal ask of the staff. I don't know if that makes any sense.
Can I just?
Yeah, go for it.
I think it's, I, I think that, and, and I really wasn't talking about that and I think most, I, I know in the past that was encouraged, like, hey, if you have a question, call me was. Was kind of the, and my sense is that would probably be Clint's thing. So I think the outside of the meeting is, is absolutely one thing and I, and I really wasn't looking at that.
No, no, I know, that was like separate.
What happens here, you know, and even for example, hey, we're, we're, let's do a walk on the forest app thing. We do that and we had staff here and we're kind of directly with them. I really think even something like that should be, hey, what are the, what do you, you know, what do you think and not putting staff on the spot to say. Yep, yeah, let's do that walkthrough. I mean, all of it, I think, and, and I know, I'm not to nitpick into little things, but I'm just trying to, coming up with different examples where. I think that stuff funneled through, through the manager is important and we've just sort of gotten away for, like I said, all kinds of.
Yeah, no, I, I agree, I, I get it.
So right, it's very, very, very quickly, um, I guess my lengthy thing I just said, um, I, I guess all I'm saying is maybe. Se- seeking some kind of consensus and group agreement, but in fact, we do wanna ask for this. If, if one counselor wants a ton of information or something on, on a thing, we should decide maybe sometimes. Should, or do we actually want town staff to be spending their time on this collectively? Um, even though I do respect like all of us are gonna have legitimate concerns, we're gonna want information. Sometimes if it's gonna be a, a huge uplift, maybe it's something for all of us to collectively decide whether or not it's worth it. But that's all. Sorry, Sarah.
No, it's okay. I was actually just sort of, I'm gonna say, like, to summarize what I'm hearing is, um, being clear in meetings that. If council has an ask, that our ask is being directed also in meetings to Clint. And it's on Clint to say to a staff member, do you want to come up and address that now, if not on us, right? Leo, that we address our questions to Clint and if Clint wants to say. Mitch, do you wanna come speak about this or Bill, do you wanna come speak about this? That it's Clint who does that. Is that correct?
Yes.
And I also am hearing from folks that, um, a bit from Dan and a bit from Rob, that it may also be important at meetings that we. Actually take a vote on whether we are asking the town manager to do something as a group as opposed to as an individual. Those are the two things that I heard about meetings that it might be important to do. Um, and I do think that's something that we could easily incorporate when we get back to the policy and procedures manual, but in the meantime. I think Dan's idea of a training that would be with Clint and council together. You know, on our roles and how that works would be a brilliant idea personally. I think that's great. So that's where I'm at.
Great, any, anything else on this topic?
You know, this topic, are we considering?
That's the same thing.
I was gonna ask if we could try to get through these first two orders. The third one, I sent an email at the very last end of the day today and I will pass this around. This is nothing we need to talk about tonight, in my opinion, this could wait. But, um, so number three in my mind could be tabled to the next meeting.
Number three on what?
Item C three. About future committee plan. I don't feel the need that that needs to happen tonight, Leo, so to me that.
I don't think you have to table a non-adjourned.
Okay. It could be pushed. The language around it is not that important to me, but I think we could delay that, Leo, but I do think these first two orders. Um, at least in conversations with Clint, I think there's some desire to perhaps move forward. On these first two, perhaps as quickly as possible. Um, I think people got them, it's fine, one for you, one for me and we're good.
We have, yeah.
That's the same email.
Several other orders to get through, so.
But, I don't know, but on my section, I was hoping order twenty four, one fifty one and one fifty two, we could take a vote on so that some of these meetings could begin. Clint had expressed some interest in moving these meetings forward as soon as possible.
I see the value in, in setting these processes up to start.
All right, so we're gonna discuss the scheduling structure of the council meeting review, um, I think we need a. A motion to put order twenty four, one fifty one on the table.
So moved.
Seconded.
Second.
Second.
Moved, moved and seconded and third by Sonia. Um, order twenty four, one fifty one is an order appointing Sarah Marks and two other councils should be determined to the, to the nominations, evaluations, council policies committee discussion.
A clarifying question and Dan, I ask you this, it, it, it sounds like one fifty one and one fifty two. Almost do the same thing. I understand that one fifty two adds to the process.
Yeah.
But what exactly is the difference?
Sure, go ahead, Sarah's got it.
Um, so Jacob, the way that, um, we had conceived of that is that the nominations, evaluations and council policies committee, way too long a name. We need to shorten it, but that it would have a charge that's significantly larger than the working group in twenty four, one fifty two. Which has a specific charge to be the first task for this, um, and. Committee, um, in collaboration with staff members that Clint would appoint. Because some of these tasks are ones that in talking with Clint, um, and there was clear agreement that certain tasks on this list. Need to be like a joint group of this council committee and staff members together. Meeting together to get to the resolution we want. Does that help?
So the, the people that get appointed. The people that get appointed under order twenty four, one fifty one serve to the rest of the municipal year, so until November twenty twenty five. The people who get appointed, I know that the conversation that happens twenty four, one fifty two ends hopefully in August. You know, it's that kind, it's a, it's a subset, uh, it's a, it's a project for the three councils, who, the two councils will be working with Sarah on the committee.
Okay. Yeah.
Who, anybody like to step up and serve with Sarah on, I prefer not to, but. Just because of the role I play, but I.
I can't promise an immense amount of my time, but I'm willing to. Yes.
Okay. Everyone okay with that? So I would offer that, um, the order would be amended to, or amended, or just, do you just name them, Clint?
I think it's, doesn't need to be amended because you named them and.
Okay, I would offer the, him offer that we're naming Rob, Council Rob Larway and Counselor. Uh, Baker to serve with. Uh, to serve on that committee, uh, we take a roll call vote. Sonia, you ready to vote?
I'm ready and I vote affirmative.
Council Kenny?
In favor.
Council, Council Baker?
Yes.
Yes. Council Powers, Council Demerits in favor, Council Marks.
In favor.
Okay, and Council Larway?
In favor.
See how you feel, you know, nine months, but, all right, nice, that's unanimous, thank you Clint. Um, I take a motion to, um, to move, put order twenty four, one fifty two on the table.
So moved.
Moved by Council Larway.
Second.
Second by Council Powers, it's an order, one twenty four, one fifty two is an order establishing a work group to develop recommendations to improve the schedule. And structure of town council meetings of work groups recommendation will be presented to the council, the future town council meeting. The work group structure would include, um, the members of the committee who we just appointed, serve, uh, the town manager. And two town manager designees, community and economic development director and town clerk. Can I have a, any discussion?
So.
Question.
Question. I was gonna say, so this proposal in front of us, this is something that's already, it's already been discussed between yourself and Council Marks, this is something that. You, you feel would be probably the, the most appropriate way to structure this.
Yes. Yes, and I would just, we do, yeah, in comparison, finance director will meet with the finance committee. That's an assignment I would make, but this is a work group for kind of a unique purpose. There's no designate, it's always gonna work with nominations, elections and everything else.
Policy.
Yep.
Perfect.
Uh, just procedural question, um. Given that there, the work group does include the three of us, does that mean that? Anytime that these work group gets together, it needs to be publicly noticed?
They have to be publicly noticed meetings.
But they don't have to be broadcast, they don't have to be at five o'clock on Mondays, you could do that, you try the time that works for everybody, you post it.
Is that gonna create additional administrative burdens? I mean, I'm, I'm all for open public process, but.
Because I know the other route, scheduling meetings of committees is part of our normal function. If we keep them to a manageable level of meetings, it would never be a burden. If we're gonna meet multiple times a week. With every committee going multiple times a week, I think then we get more burdensome.
Okay.
And my concern or question is, is back to what we were just sort of talking about and I guess it's been flushed, flushed out already or flushed out already. Um, when I see the town clerk and I think about November. Uh, the national election coming up, it just seems like that couldn't work, but.
So Leo, this can, this working group, um, we, Dan and I had a conversation with Clint about it and this was Clint's suggestion of who would serve and the ideas that the working group would be. Very intensive and time limited on this and do our work really ideally in the next month to six weeks and be done. To come back to council with a recommendation is the timeframe that was put forth.
Without setting a timeframe, I agree. Yep.
It'll be August.
Well, a month or two, so long over before November was the timeframe on this particular project, so, and again, we didn't vote on this, Clint made this. Recommendations on appointment stand and I had no say.
Yeah. Our meeting schedule runs.
It was, and that was maybe just more directed towards Clint even, um, but I didn't know the timeframe. No, there isn't a timeframe. Um, okay.
It's a goal, not a timeframe, Leo.
And, and I do, okay.
All right, um, any more discussion?
I guess my only thing that's on point three that is.
When are you gonna vote on this thing?
Oh, sorry, vote, yeah.
Okay, if there's no more discussion, Council Bussel? We're voting, sorry. Council Kenny?
In favor.
Council Baker?
Yes.
Council Powers?
In favor.
Council Marks?
In favor.
Council Larway? Council Demerits in favor. Nice job, all right. Item three, just quickly, do you have anything for it?
The only thing is you'll notice on the email that I sent and the page it did went around, the first question was about these meetings. I just would like confirmation that council is comfortable for this working group. With us setting a meeting time that jointly works between these three counselors and these three staff members, which probably will not be Mondays at five. And that we will pick a time and we will notice those meetings publicly as needed.
Will they, will you record them?
Sounds great.
I don't know, that's up to staff since staff are there anyway. I don't know how much harder it is to hit record versus not, but I would say Leo, that's a staff question, it's a Mr.
Let me think this, I mean, that's a good question, I didn't, not used to your processes and I think that would be a good outcome of some of the things we're gonna review. Um, I mean, I don't know, I'll let you know when we. Go over that.
All right.
You notice that I flagged it's a staff question really on staffing time and I wanna pass that decision to them. Is that okay, Leo?
Sounds good. Work hard. All right.
Okay, thank you. And can we return to the rest of those questions at?
Absolutely, we can, yeah.
Because I do think they're important. Thanks, thank you.
Um, unfinished business, we had order, do we wanna, Jacob, do you wanna take up your?
Yep, so, uh, I.
Let me put it on the table, so can I get a motion to put order twenty four, one fifty three on the table?
So moved.
Moved by Rowley.
Second.
Second by Council Baker. Council Baker.
All right, so I took all these suggestions from last time, uh, put them into a word change document, which is what you see before you. Um, Sarah emailed me, uh, yester sometime and two small changes to what you see before you. Uh, one, we are removing, uh, the word quarterly, that was my mistake, so grand applications will be received on a. Rolling basis, but funding will be limited to a quarter, um. Of the total funding amount every quarter. Um, and then the second thing is she asked that we, uh. Uh, add the word many in front of all words of grant, so it's specific to mini grants.
I thought it was great updates, I thought I collected everything that I sensed. I didn't have any changes.
My only question, Jacob, is at the end, under procedural administrative items. Um, it used to say grantees must complete a W nine and it got changed to administrative paperwork. From my perspective, W nine's more specific and probably less intimidating than administrative paperwork, which sounds like it could be lots of things.
I don't really care, I just removed that because we have the conversation about W nine being too intimidating, so.
Change it to necessary paperwork, just it. It must complete any administrative paperwork with, with the town and submit an invoice for him and that, that. Is vague, but it also gets rid of the scary word administrative.
My big thing is not the wording, it's more just to let people know that there's help, like if they don't know what a W nine is, so personally, I'd rather have it say grantees must complete a W nine. And submit an invoice and, you know, town staff will, or whoever can explain if you have questions on those forms, right? I don't care who explains that, whether it's Matt or staff and that would be a Clint to sham question, I guess, and a Matt Powers question, but. I just want them to know that if they don't know what a W nine is or what an invoice is, that somebody would say to them, probably a new invoice, but. I just want them to know that if they don't know what a W nine is, or what an invoice is, that somebody would say to them, probably a new invoice, but. You know, here's what that looks like, here's your sample, here's all you fill out. Is really my concern there. Is it possible to just put W nine back in and add a sentence saying? This person can help you if you want to know how to do that.
Fine by me. Do we have that for note? Everybody, any concerns with that? How do we wanna process that, Clint, in terms of, we have something on our agenda that needs to be?
To the council, do you wanna, do you wanna prove something you haven't seen what the final wording is?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, so then we'll just clue in, the understanding is I'm not gonna name an individual person, cause then you're gonna have to amend it.
I meant chair of the community development. Versus a staff member.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Thanks.
Can do it.
Thank you.
Let's, are we ready to vote? Counselor Berthold?
In favor.
Counselor Kenny?
In favor.
Counselor Baker?
Yep.
Counselor Powers?
In favor.
Counselor Marks?
Favor.
Counselor Larway?
In favor.
Making us wait. Counselor Demerit's in favor, that's a unanimous vote on order twenty-four one fifty-three. The town council chair and town manager updates, I am gonna. Um, in terms of town council chair updates, the only thing I'm gonna say is I've talked, I had a really good conversation. With, some of you probably heard a rumored, you know, report on the Webster neighborhood that was promised that never, never was delivered. Um, I had a good conversation with a citizen about it and I brought it up to Clint and we'll come back with some more thoughts about kind of what those. Um, what those matters were, and I don't have time to.
Puzzled looks though, for people who don't know, that was from a two thousand twenty-one meeting, so this is a long time back. There was a Webster meeting in two thousand twenty-one with a report promised that wasn't delivered that we're trying to follow.
Yeah. And it's on, you know, it's, I don't wanna create the expectation that report, now that we've had the transitions that we've had is gonna come, but. You know, we're gonna bring Clint up to speed on what was kind of the basis of those concerns, and then start having. Conversations about, you know, what the, what responsiveness would be um, to things that have not changed. Um, and nothing decided, um, just a, a conversation that, that we've had. Do you have?
Two good ones.
Yep.
One, it's hot and this building's not been cooling as it's supposed to. So some issues with the HVAC, we got someone coming in tomorrow, thanks to the public works and Mr. Cody. In that vein, we had a quick conversation, there are no service agreements on any of our buildings for our HVAC systems, which I found. Uh, not the norm, so we're beginning to research how that would look. Um, it would not be something where it would be a bitted item, but it's more of, you would have a service agreement on an hourly rate. So that they would get routine maintenance, routine replacement of filters. But we're not one by one calling, and we know who to call, and they've already promised that they can show up. Fixing a whole lot of the issues, so that's gonna be good, and we're having to move that. The other one I met with the um. Meredith Higgins, superintendent schools on pickleball, and laid that out perfectly, and she asked for some information from staff. Um, that we are getting back to her on nets and. Demand, which there is a demand through what we saw, but they're, her board. Like to discuss it, so it's going on their agenda, we're gonna get all the information back to her in time for the school board just to weigh in on. What they think on pickleball courts, on their tennis courts, and we'll let you know how that goes when we get the answer.
I don't care that it's five minutes, eight, I'm just gonna say that the ball is in their court now.
Ball is in their court.
Alright, so, thank you Clint, sorry, yeah, good sir, served that right up. Alright, um, future agenda items, items of concern, uh, the ones, I'll go, we'll start with the ones that are bolted. Um, I wanted to suggest our, our meetings are scheduled through the end of September. And we've got, again, committee meetings every, some kind of council meeting every Monday, except for Labor Day, I think, between now and September thirtieth. So I wanted to suggest, and I know this was a long meeting tonight, and it. Won't ordinarily be this long, but I wanted to suggest that we cancel. Um, the committee meeting scheduled for July twenty-second and August fifth. And convert the July twenty-ninth meeting to a special council meeting just like tonight. So we can vote on, have, discuss some things, vote on some things, move things along, and not have to meet every Monday.
I guess.
Sounds good.
Yep. Yep, so in that case, anything else on our future items or items of concern?
Wait, do we need to vote on?
We need to move it under new business, so. Yeah. If there are no other items, um, under new business, I take a motion to put order twenty-four one fifty-four on the table. Moved by Counselor Baker.
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor Larway, this is in order to cancel, canceling the council committee meeting scheduled for July twenty-second. Twenty twenty-four and August fifth, twenty twenty-four, and converting the July twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four council committee meeting to a special council meeting. Any discussion?
I won't be here, but I'll try and run by Zoom.
Excellent.
I can.
Alright.
Which one, twenty-nine?
Yeah, I won't be here the twenty-ninth, but I'll give my best to join.
Okay.
I can't promise anything.
Okay.
Do my best.
Alright, well, that will take a vote, uh, Counselor Berthold?
Sounds fine to me.
Okay, that's a vote, that's a yes. Counselor Kenny?
Favor.
Counselor Baker?
Yep.
Counselor Powers?
In favor.
Counselor Marks?
Aren't we?
In favor.
Counselor Larway?
In favor.
Counselor Demerit is in favor, is that's unanimous with uh, the snarkiness from Counselor Baker noted for the gender as well, thank.
Oh, that was not snarky.
That was, yeah, that was just scratching, alright, yeah, you're good man. Alright, uh, we are open for public comment, is there any, oh, two. First up? You gotta work this out. Daniel, go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, okay, mine's very important. This is the last business for business to present to council. To my understanding, now, maybe that's old, I'm old, I could be misinformed. But I share with you the following. Very important. Nowhere is my name on that stuff.
Thank you.
Yet to.
Yes, of course you.
One for me, one for Greg. Thank you.
All right, very important, I'll keep it really tight.
Yep.
Time such that, I love the idea of you guys going home early. You, by the way, it's not great. I mean, you, you guys in a very short period of time have done wonderful, I, I just can't even begin to tell you. Um, I'm seeking a special counsel that is beyond here, and this has to do with my business. Um, in other words, there's no time limits on elder abuse, child abuse. Main is an A-one state on that issue. Also fraud, uh, there's different things. Um. How do I answer into this? Um, first, when Governor Lapage was governor, we served him. What was called a remonstance from the citizens of Maine. And it took a bit, and he understood what we were doing. And he signed it in effect into law, and that was constitutional common law courts, constitutional common law judges. And um, that uh, they would be trained, the existing judiciary would be trained in that issue. We were headed out the door and on our way to Janet Mills, the AG at that time, and um. Uh, the governor said, hold up, sure, and he instructed her. His signature of this into law, for her to put it into effect. All she had to do was turn to the VA and say, go ahead and do this. But we went out, we properly served her, we served the legislature, we served, served every part of. Uh, body of governance and the ju- judiciary. And in each case, it was properly approached. And it was given no respect whatsoever, which brings me back to a group of about a hundred, whoever it was. That um, what, what was it that uh? A Secretary of State fell as dead, was it take Trump off the ballot? I'm maybe something like that, anyway. The same group activated the same law that we brought forward, but in our case. It was only the Secretary of State. On our case, the governor signed it. So promptly I took this uh, order. And I came here to the town of Arno shortly thereafter. We served the town of Arno at a public meeting. And the then Aaron Frye, which is Attorney General now. Had no response, so it was in effect after a certain period of time. And it's something that it, it should be embraced, constitutional common law, and, 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 and obeying the same. We have a special case that deals with Arno and um, I'm going to talk a little bit about my business permanent. Well, we have a special case that deals with Arno and the state of Maine. In this case, you can write it down, I can provide it later, it's six nine eight, A. Two D, one zero five nine, I'll say it again, six nine eight, A two D. One zero five nine, that is statutory law in the state of Maine. And that's binding, and it stems from a law case at the law court, which means Arno, La Pointe, and the state of Maine. And um, that, that one is ninety-seven ME one eighty-five. And those all stem from a lower court case, which maybe isn't as important, but um. It's uh, ninety-four LU zero zero seven. And what that says grandfather to La Pointe. And non-amending, you cannot amend law, you cannot change law for our failure. Well, and uh, pre-sixty-one, due then reason. So in other words, the laws before the district court have been created. Uh, apply to us, and, and we can't be foolish, I mean, you know, we have to accommodate what everybody can enable us. Well, now, that leads me to my state license, which is Recycle Z twenty-two. My permit with the town of Arno, which is number two. And we have um. Lost opportunity, our opportunity for no mailing, I received no mail, I received no notice from the town of Arno. About this, and it seems that like uh, this fraudulent probate court, which the judge. Been sentenced to jail. Now, I'm just gonna back up just a little bit.
Yeah, we're gonna have to, we limit public comment to three minutes typically, yeah, five.
Town manager gone, okay, Maine Municipal Association gone. You know, the judge is due to jail, my brother James died. Okay, inappropriately, yeah, and um, now, I, I just need to say uh, this. There was a recent case before the Maine Supreme uh, uh, Maine Jud- uh, Supreme Judicial Court. And it says it, it was West Virginia versus an environmental protection agency. It said that under those a- aspects that are under the government umbrella had no lawful authority to make any laws. Implant rules or try to enforce it as law against the people, they are not a legislative body. Bureau Motor Vehicle is the same, we have the Fifth Amendment, Article One, Section Ten, Clause One. That says no state can legislate a bill of attainder or an expose, say, a, a, a fact of law. Or impair the obligation of contract. I own my business, I own my property, I have joint tenant survivor of those properties. Arno has its foot in the door that interferes through the uh. Uh, law enforcement for my entry and exit of my property. Also, we have a column that's in front of you that shows clearly that there is fraud. This lovely lady, which did the investigative reporting, was so good, it scared the living bananas out of me so much. They offered her a job in Georgia. Which is very lucrative, and she went and took it. So I asked her, I said, would you please look on the very last sheet in that packet that I gave you, so please. You will see a listing of her. Right, her different things, and this is all can be found at the mainmonitor.org. And you will find it there, and you scroll down and you'll find law uh, court decisions. And probate, and once you hit that on that page, it'll lead you to that lovely Stacy Gurren and her. Verbal presentation on. Walk a mile in May, walk a mile in their shoes, uh, which still diamond abuse of children, which is, has to do with DHS. Is nothing compared to what's being done to our elderly. And, and the foreclosure methods that are taking their properties, if a property is taken and sold. The extra is supposed to go back to the people that they keep split, and they never tell anybody this. This is a very serious issue and it's far, far bigger than I, but my um. Uh, brother Jim uh, was incapacitated for over two years. Incapable of doing the job, sadly, he died. And I informed the court and I said, he would die in two weeks, he died in two, in two weeks. I have a, a process of grief, it's sadness. And I have something that we have fought so hard for, and I worked many winters in the cold. And brought one of ten, helping to feed the family. Thank you for listening to me, I ask and I petition of you to have special considerations. I am awaiting the code officer to provide information, which he has not. And uh, so that I can present my licensing and, and keep it current. All you have to do to see what I knew back then, is go back, what was it, September eleventh of last year? I believe I addressed the council three times, and, and some of that is, was, I think, part of the nail in the coffin of that. Town manager, which found reasonable cause to send her on her way, and I ask you. As a long-term resident, Mr. Perry said, we want you in this community, we will accommodate you. And um, and a non-governmental a- agency, which is under the umbrella and governance, cannot take away that right. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, we'll talk about it with town manager, thank you, okay. Linda, do you have handouts?
Um, I just wanna say that I really appreciate that there is now some guideline and policy around the mini grants. Um, I've been somewhat uncomfortable with the process up to this point, kind of handing out money without some kind of foundation of guideline. Um, and I hope that moving forward for any new pilot program that might come up or that some of the groundwork is done beforehand. Um, so that we can kind of better monitor kind of what's going out in terms of monies. Um, and I also just want to quickly remind the council to keep on the radar about discussions. On what we're doing with all of our buildings, including this one, and what we're doing.
Thank you. Thank you, any other, is there any public comment online?
Nope, no hands raised at this time.
Thanks, Mitch, um, we're gonna need the exec, we uh, executives, do we need to do the executive session tonight?
Highly recommend.
Oh, yep, we have people waiting for us too, right?
Yep.
Yes, yep, okay, we're gonna, uh, I need a motion to move into pursuit to one MRSA subsection four oh five sixty. For compensation with the town attorney regarding ongoing litigation, need a motion on order twenty-four one fifty-five. Move it. Get that?
Who was the move?
This side of the table.
Jacob would move it.
Yeah, and, and the order is authorizing the town manager, ex, no, we're gonna come back from executive session, so.
Yep.
All those in favor going to executive session, Sonia?
In favor.
Counselor Kenny?
In favor.
Counselor Baker?
In favor.
Counselor Powers?
In favor.
Counselor Demerit is in favor, Counselor Marks?
In favor.
Counselor Larway?
In favor.
It's unanimous, we're gonna move into executive session, thank you, everybody. Okay, so we are out of executive sessions and returning to regular business and broadcasting. I would uh, entertain a motion on, on order twenty-four one fifty-five to put it on the table.
Motion.
Moved by Counselor Pa- uh, Counselor Baker, seconded by Counselor Powers. Uh, order twenty-four one fifty.
We muted.
Are we muted, Mitch?
No, you're not muted, I can hear you.
Okay, great, sorry.
Sorry.
Maybe Sonia's muted is what's showing for us, I don't know.
Sorry, anyway.
Okay, um. Alright, order twenty-four one fifty-five, order authorizing the town manager to execute a settlement agreement. As real, as a result of tax abatement mediation with CD Park Seven LLC for tax shares FY twenty-one, FY twenty-two, FY twenty-three. And FY twenty-four, any discussion? Yep. Uh, let's, we have a vote on the table, on a, on the motion, uh, Counselor Berthold?
In favor.
Counselor Kenny?
Favor.
Counselor Baker?
In favor.
Counselor Powers?
In favor.
Counselor Marks?
In favor.
Counselor Larway?
Favor.
So dramatic. Counselor Demerit's in favor, the pass unanimously. Good, um, we have a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Second, all those in favor, Counsel Berth- Counsel Berthold?
In favor.
Alright, and now, Counselor Kenny, Counselor Baker, Counselor Powers, Counselor Marks, Counselor Kenny, Counselor Larway. Counselor Demerit's in favor, it's unanimous.
Wow.
Thank you. Nothing next Monday, though.